It's 6:00 PM, September 28, 2021. The Board of Trustees of Colrain Township convened for a special meeting, so work sessions. Okay, Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Ms. Raj Kapal?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
So, Mr. Mills?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Raj Kapal. Good evening, Board of Trustees. We are here at 6:00 PM for a special meeting. It's a work session where our goal is to unpack TIFs, Tax Increment Finance Districts. And there's going to be a tag team of Jeffs giving you guys a presentation and the, any residents that care to watch this on Waycross, about how property tax works, because it's complicated. It's not simple. It's, it can be complex. And so we're going to start with sort of a 101 presentation on how property tax works. And then Jeff McElravy will jump into how TIF districts work in, within the construct of property tax. Then we're gonna, that's sort of the 101 section, and then we're going to get a little more heady. We're going to get down into the weeds a little bit and talk about things like inside millage versus outside millage, and other kind of technical nuances to property tax. So, and then hopefully we'll answer some frequently asked questions, and then of course, have a discussion with you all about, about TIFs and property tax. So, should be an exciting hour here. We'll kick this thing off with our Finance Director, Jeff McElravy.
It's a very exciting topic. It's, thanks for doing that.
Yep, and timely, as we have seven TIF districts on the agenda at our regular session this evening. Yep.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for having me. So, in order to understand the drivers of tax increment financing, we thought it would be very helpful to begin with a conversation about how property tax works, because TIF is a function of the property tax. So, there are two categories of properties that the county auditor uses to set a property tax rate. The one with which most folks are familiar is the residential rate, which also includes agricultural property, and also the commercial rate, which includes industrial property. In the, this is actually a number from the 2010 census and subsequent updates, but the average value for a home in the township is $123,200. So, for the math that we're going to go through in these next several slides, we're using $120,000 as the market value to make the math a little easier to digest. So, the first step that the auditor takes in order to determine how much a resident pays in property tax on their home is to apply the assessed value, which is 35% of the market value. And to the right of the slide, you'll see how the math works for that, reducing that market value down to the $42,000 in assessed value. But that is not the rate on which the tax is applied. There are actually 15 entities that receive some portion of the property tax, and the current tax rate in the township is 113.27 mils. At least it is in the Northwest Local School District. It's a little bit higher in Mount Healthy. So, for the math, if we apply the assessed value, that $42,000, to the millage, you would, that is the full rate of tax that would be paid by a resident. But, nobody pays the full rate. The next step is to apply something that is called a reduction factor, which reduces the rate. So for residential property, it reduces the millage from the number you saw on the previous slide down to 73 point some mils in change. So when we apply that millage to the assessed value, it reduces the tax liability down to a little over $3,000 on that $120,000 home. But, nobody pays the effective rate either. There are a series of credits that apply to some tax bills. The first is a non-business credit, meaning the home isn't used for business activity. The second is an owner occupancy credit, meaning it's not a rental property. And then the third is a sales tax credit. In addition to that, for senior citizens who are in their homes, they may be eligible for a homestead reduction. So, when you apply all of those credits to the effective tax, you reduce that tax liability further, and the math looks like that. So it goes from a little over $3,000 down to $2,760.86 in actual property tax that is paid on that $120,000 home. So that bill is split into two payments. The first is due in January, and the second is due in June of each year. So that, very high level, is how property tax works in a residential context. Maybe I should pause here before we switch over to how TIF works. Any questions?
On the homestead rate, you mentioned that was for seniors. What is a, what is, what age is classified as a senior?
Oh.
If you don't know, that's fine. I just, I'm just jotting down questions. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Can you back up? I'm sorry, can you back up to, back up again? Yeah, so this, all these, the reduction, so the sales tax and the, the non-business and owner occupant are all the same within the county. This reduction value, is that the same within the county, or does it differ from township to township?
That, those are countywide numbers.
Okay. How does, I'm probably asking a question that's very unfair. How does Hamilton County size up with the reduction factor and like the credits as opposed to other counties in Ohio?
We haven't done that analysis.
Do you have a gut? Are we in the middle, towards the top, the highest, towards the bottom?
I don't.
Okay. Just, again, that's, I realize it's an unfair question, because it's...
Well, I think that we, people in Hamilton County have a whole different level of county provided services, and I know if you go to Claremont or Brown, or, I don't know, I'm not so sure about Butler and Warren anymore, but as you get out of this county, there's a lot less government provided services, so I would think the taxes would be a little bit lower.
I'm guessing less than Cuyahoga County and more than Brown County.
Right, yeah, next to, you're right with comparing it to comparable population centers.
Sorry, just curious.
So if we could advance to the next slide. So this is a graphical representation, and then also the math about how that residential property tax is distributed. It may be a little bit tough to see, but the two largest recipients of, of the property tax are the school district, and then in orange, the township. And then there are pieces that are split out amongst the, I believe it's 13 other taxing jurisdictions that are in the township.
And as a comment, the, the item for joint vocational school, we did not have that in Colrain Township until about 2007, when Colrain High School and Northwest High School merged their vocational schools into the Butler Tech system. And that, that item goes towards the Butler Tech Joint Vocational School, that, that fourth item on there. And since we're not a city or a village, we don't have a city or village tax.
That's right.
And if you're sitting at home interested in how your particular breaks down, this is all at the auditor site, on a tab, I think it says graph, but I can't remember, right?
That's right. That's right. A property owner can search the Hamilton County Auditor's website. They can key in their property address and take a look at the distribution that applies to their home. They can also adjust the valuation to see what the impact would be if that interested them, for whatever reason. So, how does TIF work in the context of property tax? What TIF does is it captures the future valuation that will result from an investment today, and redistributes the way that that property tax is distributed compared to what would have happened if the TIF was not in place. So the tax base that's in place today, the way that revenue is distributed, like we showed you on the prior slide, does not change. We're going to take you through a very brief sample here, very high level, but this is a commercial project rather than a residential one. The assumption here is that the current valuation of the property is $1 million, and that as a result of the investment, the valuation on the property will increase to $6 million. So the increment in the tax increment financing is $5 million. So we're going to show you two scenarios in terms of how the funds would be distributed. The first is without the TIF, and then the second is with the TIF. This is a distribution without the TIF. The assumption here is that there is no impact on the Northwest Local School District, that they are held harmless, for lack of a better term, as a result of the TIF. So, this assumes that the project happens, but the TIF is not in place. The, the school district would receive just shy of $100,000 a year. The township would receive just over $40,000 a year. The 13 other entities would split $46,000 a year, and the total taxes paid by the owner would be $183,000. Now, if the TIF were in place, the distribution is different. Keep in mind, the existing distribution on the current value today continues as if, without any kind of change. And again, the Northwest Local School District receives the 96,000. In this case, the amount that flows to the township increases significantly to $79,000 a year. The 13 other entities receive $8,000 a year from this parcel. But those levies that are in place to support all of the other services that are provided by the county levies, you know, mental health, children's services, take your pick, those levies will still raise the same amount of money overall, because the valuation for the township, or excuse me, for the county overall, is so much larger than this one particular parcel in this one, in this one particular TIF. So the total taxes paid by the owner is the same. The big difference is how the money is distributed, and this is the opportunity for the township to be a little bit creative in terms of bringing additional revenue to bear on investments in public infrastructure and similar priorities for economic development.
So to be clear, there's no tax break when we consider a TIF. The, and TIFs are for a limited amount of time, and other townships in this county that have instituted TIFs, some of, specifically Anderson and Green, those TIFs are going to run out someday, and their revenue stream is going to change dramatically, because they've built their operations on all that TIF money.
That is correct, and it's also...
Here in Colrain, where I believe we have about less than 3% of our valuation, less than 1% TIFT, that's just something other townships have done, and they've built a lot of nice stuff like that. While we have continued to bear the, most of the burden, our taxpayers for all the different county services, that Green and Anderson aren't necessarily contributing those amounts to. And then with reference to your last slide, since 2018, this current board has, has always contacted the school district when a TIF came up, and I believe they've been made whole on everything that's happened since January 1st of 2018.
And that's a very nice segue to my final slide, that shows what the return to the township would be in a 10-year timeframe, and also in a 30-year timeline with and without the TIF for this one particular project that generates the $5 million in increment. So over the 10-year term, if there weren't a TIF, the township would receive a little over $400,000 in property tax. And if there were a TIF in place, the township would receive almost $790,000. So obviously, a significant difference there, and it's even more striking over 30 years. Without the TIF, it would be 1.2 million, and with, it would be almost 2.4.
And what we're doing with those, that, the additional funds from projects like that, is making improvements in that immediate area, such as sidewalks and other things that normally we wouldn't have the funding to pay for.
Yes, sir.
I'm just throwing you some points to go with it.
Jeff, go ahead. Go ahead, Matt.
I have two, two different, vastly different points here. So what is the advantage of doing a 10-year over a 30-year if, if, if there is one?
So, a 10-year TIF, I think it really depends on what the goals are of the board in terms of what it is that they're trying to do. It could be that the cost of what needs to be done cannot be financed over a 10-year period. It also could be that, or could not be funded over a 10-year period. It also could be that, that the useful life of whatever it is that's being built, the road, or, or the sidewalk, take your pick, is somewhere in between that 10 and 30-year period, and it may be more appropriate to size the term of the TIF to match the useful life of the asset. But, but I think what, what you'll find when we're looking at a specific project, is that having a TIF that runs for a longer term is going to be necessary to pay for the improvements that are necessary, particularly if there is a preference from the board not to issue debt in order to be able to pay for improvements.
And let's say that this particular, the, the commercial property world goes wild, and at around year seven, it's no longer worth 6 million, it's worth nine, that, that six to nine million phase, we still collect taxes on.
That's correct.
Okay. And the other point I just wanted, and this is, I had a long discussion with folks at Sycamore Township about TIFs, and the TIF had run up, run out on all that stuff they have, the, the town center and, and everything. And it was such a huge mover of revenue for the county in terms of sales tax, that they made the argument, and actually got buy-in from the commissioners, it was a little bit of a different board then, and from the state, once their TIF ran up, they were allowed to extend it and default back to the original TIF amount, which is an incredible amount of revenue for them. And the argument was to the, to the other stakeholders, hey, look at the sales tax we're bringing in, you really want to make sure that nothing, nothing gets screwed up with, with what we have here, because it's, it's an enormous amount. So sometimes politically, if, if things develop in the right position, a TIF can be extended by just putting it in. I think it's a rider in a bill.
I think that that, there was a period of time where all of the, there's old TIFs and new TIFs, so there were like pre-93, 94, that had different sets of rules, and there was a period of time right around 2016, 17, where the state was allowing those old TIFs to be extended for a period of 10 to 15 years, and several communities took advantage of that. My understanding is that that window has closed.
It has this time, they added it again for the pandemic, and it, that window closed again, but it seems if you have a, and the person I spoke to actually lobbied, he went door to door through the State House, asking people to, you know, making the argument and getting signatures for this, and, and brought it back, and it, and it worked. So it's, I, I think it can be added under different, different circumstances. Now, we don't have the same argument, obviously, Sycamore Township has, with the type of revenue we bring in, sales tax. But the point that I'm laboriously trying to make is that it, there's a limit to it, but sometimes not.
There's one other point I'd like to make on the distinction between the 10-year and the 30-year TIF. There's, there's different rules for 10-year TIFs than there are for TIFs that extend for longer than 10 years. So for a TIF that is 10 years or less in duration, the split between the township and the school district is different. You can go up to 75% of the revenue on that increment can come to the township, and only 25% would go to the school district. Whereas if you extend beyond 30 years, you, it basically has to be either make whole or negotiate some kind of agreement with the school district.
And that applies to county, the 14-county as well, the 14-county?
No, that's just, that portion, so the county will, if it's a, if the initial value of the property is $1 million, the county and all their levies will continue to collect on that $1 million, just as they would before the development, as after. They would get none of the additional incremental increase.
Jeff, there go back to the, this, this, two-part I want to ask. One part, when you have like a, for example, 30-years TIF, as, at no way, it doesn't affect the, the residential property owners, the property tax, anything, nothing increases, there decreases, anything like that? How is it a fact? That's number one question.
Jeff Weckbach is going to address that in his presentation.
Okay. Number two, going back to that 10-year, 30-years, we're talking about, when you have like a tax increment financing funds, you know, we talk about financing funds, and if you have like a 30-years TIF projects, so it adds some more money in the financing funds, which will help to develop further for the, the companies, the, the property, the, the business. You are aware of the financing funds?
So, in an economic development context, it, the most common model is that a, a private entity is interested in making an investment in the township. The site that they're invested, that they're interested in investing in has an existing facility on it that was built in the 1950s, that may have some environmental remediation issues. The water and sewer lines that are coming to the facility may be insufficient for the need that they have. Some of the, the condition of the roadway may be pretty worn down and in need of repair. It may even need to be expanded in order to accommodate additional traffic. There may not be sidewalks. There, there are a host of, of public improvements that are necessary in order for that private investment to happen. And then what would happen is that staff would come before the board and say, we have done our analysis, and we think that it is appropriate in order to be able to attract this private investment, to bring the, this public investment to bear around the project in order to allow that project to happen.
Correct.
So what would happen is that the board would create the TIF, and that increment would flow into the TIF fund at the township, and that those funds could be used to pay for the public improvements around that site, or within the boundary of the TIF, the TIF district. It is not a direct investment of public dollars in a private asset.
So who monitor these TIF financing funds? The township, or the, the private county, or?
So, the way that I have seen it done most frequently is that these are items that would go before the Tax Incentive Review Council, much like a property tax abatement, with like a CRA property tax abatement, or something along that line. And there would be a, a report that would come in, that would, that would lay out the, the financial position of the fund, and where things are from the, the company's standpoint with job creation, some of the other metrics that would demonstrate where they are, and so that the public would have an understanding of the value that they have received for making that investment.
And to put a finer point on that, so we're going to create a standalone fund, sorry. We're going to create a standalone fund for, you know, if, if approved tonight, for each of the TIF districts, which will be audited by the Ohio Auditor, each, every biennium, every two years or so. Then, in Colrain Township recently, the Board of Trustees has elected to bring the Tax Incentive Review Council for TIFs back to local. So it'll be you guys, and every year, you'll get a report on these TIF districts. You guys recall the, the Turk meetings, and so you'll get a report on the TIF districts, and so you will also be monitoring those, and we'll be sending those to the Ohio Department of Development, who will also be monitoring those. So there's, there's quite a bit of, of monitoring that occurs on, on these.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, to clarify a point that, that Matt made, in the hypothetical situation of a million-dollar valuation on a, let's say vacant piece of property, versus the $6 million valuation when the property is industrially developed. And then Matt made the point, well, what about if seven years later, the $6 million is now worth $9 million? That next $3 million, does that go into the TIF fund, or does it go back into the, to the base?
It goes into the TIF fund.
Okay, so, so the county is still collecting, collecting taxes based on the 1 million, and then whatever increase in valuation there is, you know, 6 million after the project's completed, and 9 million several years later after the boom in the property tax, or the boom in the commercial real estate industry, so that would go into the TIF fund. At the same time, if, if there was a recession in, in commercial property, and that 6 million valuation all of a sudden dropped down to four, that would just reduce the money going into the TIF fund, or is it locked in at the 6 million?
That would reduce the amount of money going into the TIF.
Okay, I figured, I just wanted to bring that point up, that...
And one additional clarification for that incremental piece. I mean, again, it's not just funds flowing into the TIF fund, there's also the portion that flows to the Northwest Local School District, or the Mount Healthy School District.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McElravy. Okay, that was 101. Now we're going to step up and have, have Professor Weckbach come up and teach 201. This is getting a little bit more technical and a little bit more in the weeds, but I think it's important. So here we go.
So, and actually, the first slide here starts to get to the question that you were bringing up before Raj, so, yeah, inside millage versus outside millage. So, on your property taxes, it, it's comprised of two different things. We've got this thing called inside millage, which was set, you know, way back in the day to be no more than 10 mils, and that's split amongst various taxing jurisdictions. Inside millage grows year over year, or declines year over year, depending on what the tax base does. So if there's a lot of improvements in the township and property tax, property tax values go up, you will see an increase in revenue related to your inside millage. Outside millage is what we consider a levy. So this is what's voted on by the public, there's no rate or limit on how big this can be. Usually it's for a very specific purpose, and it collects the same tax level, same revenue, regardless of changing in the base. So, property valuations could go up by $100 million, but it's still going to bring in about the same revenue year over year. For illustrative purposes, the graph there shows the difference between inside and outside millage. As you can tell, out of the 113 mils related to the Northwest Local School District portion of Colrain Township, 103 of that is outside millage. So, again, showing that the inside millage is a very, very small piece of this pie that we're talking about.
And Jeff, the inside millage that accrues to the township goes to our general fund, right?
General fund and our road and bridge fund.
Road and bridge, right. Everything else is...
The general, what else?
Road and bridge. Yep.
Everything else is outside millage.
Yes.
Right? And so, that inside millage is the only, the really important point here that I just want to put an underline under, is the only thing that grows with economic development is inside millage, and that's that 10 out of 113 mils.
And that's split between us, Hamilton County, and Northwest Local School District. So, I, I think we're somewhere in the 2 to 3 mil range of that 10 that comes to us.
Right. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Doesn't want to do it.
Well, you have to say, at this point, any questions or clarifications needed on inside or outside millage?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So one of the things, and I think the next slide speaks to, is yet again, when we speak of outside millage, we're setting that at a rate, a dollar value, and that dollar value is what's generated year over year. So the impact on a levy of a TIF is negligible to nonexistent, because it's going to bring in that same revenue year over year. The only time that there would be an issue is if all the property values in the township decrease so dramatically that the, the, when the TIF, or not when the TIF, when the levy was established, it falls below that level. That's the only time that you would probably see anything happen to the levy. So again, they, they don't have a direct impact on levies, and as the next slide's going to show, we're going to talk a little bit about the burden on a household. So does a TIF raise taxes? Short answer is no, it doesn't raise taxes. But for illustrative purposes, I wanted to see what would happen across the entire county for these levies. Could you save money if the valuations went up? So, this chart down here looks at that and compares it for $150,000 home, and I threw out a big number, because I, I knew it was going to take a big number to see what this would look like. So, if we were to... So, if we were to TIF around $100 million valuation, that, that would result in about $3 of potential savings to a homeowner in their taxes that they wouldn't have seen. So, $100 million of TIF, if we chose not to do that TIF, could result in about $3 in tax savings to the homeowner. So, just for, you know, full transparency on, on what TIFs do and how they work, and the big reason here is that you have to look at that across all of Hamilton County. And across all of Hamilton County, we're talking 200, or $22 billion, if I'm reading that chart right. So, it's a lot of money, so it takes something significant, 100 million plus, for you to start to see real changes for, for you as the property owner. And even then, it, it may not be a massive impact on your taxes. So, to your question earlier, it doesn't raise taxes on the individual, but it does stop these potential savings, however minute they are in comparison to the big picture. So, one of the policy considerations is, you know, is the potential dollars that are going to be coming to the township for local projects and local investment outweighing that $3 savings for all homeowners across all of Hamilton County?
Thank you, Jeff.
And you know, an example of that would be, at, at one point on the County Tax Review Commission, we were looking at University Hospital, which at the time was getting about $30 million a year from the county. Here in Hamilton County, if, if a person needs to go to the hospital, they were typically sent to university, and if they didn't have the money to pay the bill, that 30 million kind of went to subsidize universities so they could remain open, and you know, swallow up some of their uncollected costs when they treated patients. Well, that $30 million cost was spread across every property in Hamilton County. At my house, it works out to about $113 a half year. And when a property is TIF'd, all of a sudden, they're not paying into that. And I'll use the example of Green or Anderson, a lot of those properties are TIF'd or abated, so that $30 million isn't spread over that TIF'd or abated property over there. So my taxes that go to University Hospital might be a dollar more, because somebody over in Anderson or Green is not paying into it. And that's the effect that TIFs have had on a township like Colrain, where we've always paid the freight on all those different levies that...
Yeah.
I'm just, I just want to make that point and kind of explain it using one entity, which would be University Hospital.
And to that point, this graphic here, and, uh, part of it's being cut off on the slide, uh, the part that's cut off is the listing of all the townships in alphabetical order with Colrain at the very bottom. So, you can see quickly going down that list, the percent of total township valuation, property valuation, that is within an existing TIF district. So, Anderson Township, it's over 65%. Columbia Township, about 14%. Crosby's at 0. Delhi Township is 40. Green Township is 73. Harrison is less than 1. Miami Township is about 17. Springfield is less than 1. Sycamore is less than 1. Sims and Whitewater at 0, and we are at less than 1. So, when we talk about that impact, and then we talk about some of our, our peer townships, this is just for illustrative purposes, so you can see where they lie.
Jeff, can you go back a slide for a second?
Yep.
Um, the next. There, okay. So you've got this total valuation, current without TIF, that with TIF?
I believe that, yeah, that looks like a typo there.
Okay.
So, that should be...
That should be 22.
That should be 22, 283, 719, 600. Yep.
I'm, I'm, just, my head's getting ready to explode all this math and...
Copying and pasting too quick, and, yep, missed that, so.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. And we'll all, we're all available for questions right after this. A couple of things that I, I wanted to just touch on, Trust Younger brought this up before, but there's a misconception that TIF equals tax break for the developer, right? That is not the case. That with a TIF or without the TIF, the property owner pays the same amount of taxes. The pie is the same, it's who gets cut up, how many slices of pie is what changes. So, with a TIF, there are fewer slices of pie, and the township's slice is bigger. But the pie is the same size with a TIF or without a TIF. That means the developer is paying the same amount. Second question that happened, that comes up, and has come up in this room in previous meetings, is, well, what are you going to do with the, with those revenues? And I want to be real clear, we, we state, so, in order to create a district, you have to adopt a resolution. And there are seven resolutions to establish districts in your trustee packet for this evening. And in those resolutions, there is a, a paragraph in each resolution that has very specifically all of the different things that TIF can be used for. And I just, I'll read just a couple of them. The planning, design, and construction of public street improvements, including pavements, walkways, traffic control devices, landscaping and alterations to existing streets. The planning, design, and construction of utilities, including but not limited to water facilities, sanitary sewers, gas mains, electrical facilities, communications facilities, safety services, including police and fire personnel and/or apparatus, stormwater sewers, retention and detention devices. The planning, construction, and design of public, of public safety, park and recreation facilities, furtherance of economic development within the township, including but not limited to the purchase of or improvement of property, the preparation of plans for land use in the area, the creation or enhancement of buffer areas, open areas necessary for ensuring compatibility of adjacent land uses, and the purchase of property rights of way, like roads, and easements, or other rights and property necessary for the completion of public improvements listed above, as well as the improvements. So, what, so, it's real clear, these are the things that you're allowed to spend TIF money on, and, and that is a decision that is made by the Board of Trustees. And they have to make that decision, you know, in their, in their budgets and, and in their appropriations. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Jeff, um, this perception that, this not, TIF funds can only be used in the TIF district? That's not...
It, it has to be, there has to be a nexus between the district that is creating, that is generating the revenues and the expenditure. Now, there is a case to be made that in order to get to, you know, a, a project site, you have to traverse certain roads, and you could fix those roads with the TIF district. You have to provide safety services to those TIF districts. Maybe, as, as, as you guys see in, in the packet tonight, residential, you know, there are several new, new neighborhoods that are being developed. Well, those new neighborhoods are going to demand park services, and so you can, you can provide park services to those new neighborhoods. It doesn't have to be within the physical geography, but it does have to have a, a nexus. It has to be related to that TIF district.
I think the, the feeling I get, just to kind of, and, and I support this idea completely is what we're doing, but I think that for some voters, there's a fear that, that, that the list that you read is not specific enough. And, and I get that. What is your, what is the checks and balance to that? If, if, if this Board of Trustees goes out and spends the money on something that you think is really not needed, is the, hit the ballot box. I, I mean, that's the check for citizens. I mean, I think that, I think that the amount of money we're talking about, people want inexact, and they can't, it's just not how it works. But we can be held accountable for what we vote and how we spend that money, and should be held accountable. And I think that that's, I think that's a fear from a lot of voters. I don't know if I'm reading that wrong or not. A lot of citizens are like, well, wait a second, what exactly is this going to get us? Well, we really don't have a level set yet, it's, it's, it's not clear, it's, it's a little muddy. We have that list, and they have to count on, on the, the good judgment of the trustees and the administrator, I think.
And, and it's, it's very transparent. So, you'll be able to see in the strategic plan and budget every year, that fund and how expenditures and appropriations are made out of that fund, you'll be able to see that. And you'll also be able to see at, at the Turk meeting, the Tax Incentive Review Council that meets here and consists of, of the three of you, Dusty Rhodes and Amy Wells, there will be a listing of, of revenues and expenditures. And you'll be able, and so, in, in residence, that's an open meeting, and that'll be published just as all meetings are published, so...
And if I put forward a resolution that say, let's spend all the money on tennis courts for Colrain, these two folks sitting to my right can say, hey, that's ridiculous, we shouldn't do that, and that's a check.
Yes.
And conversely, if you were to say that, we're a check on you. So that, that's where the institutional protections are, but it's not going to be a specific list. And I think that, I'm afraid that's what people want to see, and there's just, I, I mean, I've looked at, at TIF resolutions from other townships, and that's not what they look like.
Right.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
The basic thing, rather dumb, is people to understand the common thing of the TIF. In a TIF district, the base value of the properties are frozen for a period of like, whatever, 20 years, 30 years, period of time, often between, during this time, the tax revenue from what you explained, this value will be distributed to all the usual services. And, like, Jeff Fatbach mentioned, you see it on the tax bill, like schools, everything. This is a very common, basic statement of the, the TIF, how it works. The value is frozen, the time we grant the TIF.
The base value is...
Base value, the base.
Yep, and then the incremental value can, can grow.
Can grow.
Yep. Yes, sir. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And I'll just point out that at the meeting that starts at 7, for those watching or just tuned in, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 of those on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, so we are, we are done, right? With this...
Motion to adjourn the work session?
I second it. Any discussions?
We'll be back at 7 with the regular meeting.
Yeah, it, there's been a good, both Jeffs give a nice presentation of how this works, so people have the basic understanding of the TIF project, like, how it'll develop our township.
And to those of you that are, that are watching this, and, and if you have friends or somebody that doesn't understand what it is, I, I think this was a rather comprehensive presentation, so encourage them to watch it on replay.
It is very complicated, it's very complicated, it's illegal.
Yes.
This guy's got a law school for that.
Okay, so, no other comments?
No comments? Okay. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Younger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, and there will be, a regular meeting will start at 7:00 PM. Good evening, we are back from the work sessions. Mr. Baker, roll call please.
Mr. Younger?
Here.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Let's stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of meditation. Lately, we see the, such tragedy of increase of the COVID among children. You talk about children of 2 years old, everything. Then I was reading a news, newspaper, about over 240% of increase among children is a lot, lots of... Let's, let's keep in mind, and let's pray that our children are safe at home, at school. The next on the agenda is fiscal office approval of minutes.
Thank you, Board. Have the minutes from the meeting of September 14th, 2021, we'll just ask for approval.
I motion that we approve the minutes from the September 14th meeting.
I second it. Any discussions?
I had sent you several typos, did you get all those, Jeff?
Well, I mean, several, it's, no, I'm just kidding. I did get them, they were, they were corrected.
Six? Okay. Just, I just wanted to mention that they were corrected. Okay. No other comments?
Okay. We've got a motion to approve the minutes?
I already motioned.
Oh, motion, okay. Discussion, okay.
Discussion.
Mr. Baker, call for the votes.
Mr. Younger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
The next on the agenda is the public hearings.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Raj Kapal, Board of Trustees, there, there are no public hearings this evening.
Okay. The next on the agenda is the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Raj Kapal. I am trying to get this new presentation up here. Great. It is my pleasure to introduce a face that is not new to Colrain Township. In fact, the last time I saw Ms. Trina Jackson, she was sitting up at the DAS as a member of our zoning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. Zoning Commission, yep. Trina's a former township resident, but she now leads the Hamilton County Office of Reentry, and she's here to talk about a, a special project called the LEED Initiative.
Again, thank you, Jeff, and thank you to the trustees. Are you able to hear me okay? Yeah. Okay. Um, thank you for this opportunity really to just provide an update in regards to the Law Enforcement Assistance Diversion Initiative that actually began here in partnership with the Police Department. It began in March of 2021, and we've been operating and partnering with the township to support residents in Colrain Township for, you know, nearly eight months. So, I just wanted to give you a brief update on, on how things are going, so you can switch sides. So, I just want to kind of refresh your memory about LEED and, you know, what it really is and how it started. So, the Law Enforcement Assistance Diversion Initiative, we refer to it as LEED, was actually created in Seattle, Washington. And it was created in response to a lot of nuisance offenses that were taking place in, you know, a really touristy area. And those nuisance offenses were driven by addiction, mental health, chronic homelessness. And so, the goal of the program really is to divert people who are suffering from those issues, the addiction, the mental health, the chronic homelessness, divert those individuals from the criminal justice system, and connect them to case management. So, we have started this initiative in Hamilton County because we have a grant. You can, our grant is really a $500,000 grant that the county received several years ago from the BGA, and it supports this work. It supports this work in the city of Cincinnati, Colrain, as well as the city of Norwood. You can move on. So, in order to get into this program, there are five eligible offenses. And like I said, individuals who are committing offenses that are driven by addiction and mental health and homelessness, we can't incarcerate our way out of this issue. You know, we continue to incarcerate them, they come out, they commit the same offenses over and over again, because we're not addressing the fundamental or the, the core of the problem, which is their mental health. So, we find that these eligible offenses are typically the ones that are driven by those issues. So misdemeanor offense, misdemeanor theft, every last one of them are misdemeanors. Misdemeanor drug paraphernalia, criminal trespass, disorderly conduct, and criminal damaging. You can switch. So, like I mentioned earlier, the Hamilton County Commissioners, they, they received this grant, and the oversight for the grant is provided by our Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. And that was created several years ago, that coalition, to address issues related to opiate abuse. We had extremely, you know, we're experiencing it now in Hamilton County, an extreme occurrence of ODs, you know, due to fentanyl, due to a lot of opiates. And so, the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition was created to address that issue. So, that grant was, and is monitored and supported and administered by the coalition. Now, our office, which is the Hamilton County Office of Reentry, which is where I am the director, we provide the case management support. So, all the supportive services and things like that, all the case management, coordination of care, is provided by my office. And our research partner is the University of Cincinnati School of Criminal Justice. Let's see, so there's two ways to get into this program. It can be, you can enter the program through an... It can be, you can enter the program through arrest diversion or a social contact referral. This program is driven by law enforcement. So an arrest diversion, if it occurs, it will occur at the scene of some offense, which would be one of those five qualifying offenses. And instead of immediately taking this individual who's committing this offense directly into the criminal justice system, the offender is offered case management. And the victim has to be in agreement for that to happen. So if that's the case, one of my staff will come to the scene and do an immediate screening to determine if there's an emergency need that needs to be addressed. If not, they're still referred to case management, which is also provided through the LEAD Initiative. The other way into the program is a social contact referral. That is someone who is referred to the program by a police officer, but they're not committing an offense, but the officer has familiarity with that individual, you know, they understand some of the issues that they're dealing with, and they make a referral, and we still provide the same amount of case management and coordination of care as we would for someone that's being diverted. Let's see, so as far as the demographics of our current clients, here in Corrine, the largest age group is between 25 to 44, as far as our participants are concerned. We have more females than males at this time. Like I said, we've been operating since March, so you know, this is a very new program. You can switch to the next one. And as far as our ethnicity, the makeup of these individuals, it's predominantly white at this point. You can go to the next slide. So, um, hold on. So basically, the top offense is misdemeanor theft. We've had, I want to give you the right numbers here because I can't see it all. Is there any way to move that over a little? I don't have the numbers in my head. That's okay. That's all right, I got it. I wish I could remember it.
Mr. Mills, did you turn it off and turn it back on again?
No worries.
Let an opportunity pass to ask.
I can see it on my screen.
Can you see it on your screen?
Yeah, one diversion, misdemeanor theft, 33 social contact referrals, and 440 interactions with LEAD participants from March to present.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, um, let's see, so we've connected 30% of the participants to supportive services. So the top facilities or top organizations that we, you know, have connected people with have been the PATH Team, Transitions, and there's another one called Sun Behavioral. Let's see, so 44%, I need to make that point, 44% of our participants or the referrals are currently active with LEAD. So that means that they have, you know, an ongoing relationship with the case manager. And I do need to introduce someone, one of our staff, and that is Cheryl Miles. She is our case manager, and she is the one that's been providing this case management and coordination of care here in Corrine. So one of the things I just kind of want to start wrapping up with is just the testimonials from our clients. You know, this is qualitative data, you know, we presented the quantitative, but this is how people are feeling about this program and their experience with this program. And I'll just kind of briefly read some of what our participants have said. This is a participant that was referred to us by the city of Cincinnati, Officer Simon. He said, this, our participant says that he saved his life. You know, he said, "I could be put in, I could have been put in jail because I had the beer sitting next to me, but he gave me a chance, and I've never had an officer do that." And that's true. You know, people aren't used to getting help from an officer in some cases, is, you know what I mean, for their mental health and for, you know, addiction. But, you know, there are so many officers out there that understand what these individuals are going through, and having this as a resource, the LEAD Initiative as a resource, to refer these individuals to is a real benefit for our police departments. Let's see, one of the other testimonials, "Since being in the program, my interaction with the police has decreased due to me being involved in the mental health services and the support from LEAD staff. I think LEAD is a program for individuals dealing with mental health and other issues such as homelessness." The one above it talks about creating these five goals with a former employee, which is Kelsey Richardson, and then Cheryl, and being able to accomplish those goals, when he was able to get his food, his assistance with applications and things like that completed. And so like I said, this is really a coordination of care, and what we've noticed is some of our, I would say significant number of our clients have had case management, they just aren't connected currently, and so we're able to reconnect them to the services they need so that they can become stable. I think this is maybe one of the last ones. LEAD has helped connect me to services, got me clothes and food, and has been really supportive with helping me get my life back on track. So what does success look like for us? You know, we've heard a little bit about what success looks like for our clients. For us, it's the reduction in calls for service to the police department, as well as lowering recidivism rates. And I can tell you that at the Hamilton County Justice Center, there's a revolving door. You know, people are coming in and out of the Justice Center, you would know. And, you know, and those, like I said, are people who are dealing with issues like mental health and addiction, and, you know, we can't incarcerate our way out of that problem, you know, we really can't. So I think that's probably the last slide. So any questions?
Sure, and this is just for persons that are aged 19 or 21?
No.
If there was a youth, a high school age kid that was having these kind of problems, are you equipped to put them in the same program?
Actually, we have set the parameters to 18 and over.
Right, that's what I, so it's just for adults?
Unfortunately, yeah, right now.
Thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I had a couple questions. I missed, and I think you probably went over it, when you gave the graph of the Corrine, what was your N number? How many cases were?
How many cases? Oh, let's see. How much?
440. The thing that really concerned me, the second largest cohort was 65 and over. I read that right, right? Do we have, I mean, what would be helpful, I think, maybe for us as a body is to know, to have maybe more specifics on what those folks are struggling. That was not a result that I probably, an outcome that I would have predicted, that the second largest group would be 65 and over. I don't know, maybe I would have thought it would be much younger. I wasn't surprised by the largest group, but certainly the 65 and over. Do we have an idea if it's one thing that people are suffering, that need services for, or is it, I mean, is it assortment? Not asking action for like, asking for, you know, a quantitative amount, but just your gut feel kind of thing?
I think for the 65 and older population, it's more so their calls to the actual police department. My, a lot of it is either dementia that they're struggling with, or just old age. And so being that we are a social service program, a lot of the officers would refer these individuals, wanting them to be connected to maybe some long-term care, nursing home, even though it's not really the scope of the program, being that we're so new. We've gone through transitions of what a referral, a correct referral would look like. So we did go through a lot of getting referrals for that older population, and in Corrine, there are a lot of older individuals who need services, may not be specifically LEAD, you know, LEAD cater, but we still help them with those services.
And I'm not sure how valid the assessment is under a nine-month period during COVID. I mean, those numbers may look markedly different five years after COVID. Is it really measuring what we want it to measure? Let's say that I'm taken for diversion, and while I'm in diversion, I'm alleged to have committed another crime, what happens then? Does the diversion go away, or do we wait till court date, or?
So in regards to the diversion, we hold the charge for 30 days, and during that time, if they do gain a new charge, that charge does not get diverted. It's basically on the charge that we, you know, responded to on site. And so within that 30 days, the diversion client has to complete a psychosocial assessment. If they don't complete that assessment within 30 days, then they will get charged and have to go to court.
And for the original and the second?
For the original, the second would still be on there. We, and honestly, we've never had actually that occurrence happen in Corrine, but if it was, we only divert the charge that was originally reported to us.
And it's, I think it's difficult now because like, it's less than a year, you don't have longitudinal data, you have a lot of extraneous variables like COVID and shutdowns and things like that, that may make this data a little bit different than it'll look in four or five years. The, yeah, great thing, I know one thing that Mr. Hunger mentioned, under age 18, I know that one thing that was very successful in Kenton County, if it was a first offense and it was a nonviolent offense, they actually had a jury of students that would decide on the punishment. Now, everybody would have to agree, but it kind of killed two birds with one stone because it showed the process to the students, and the person being charged was a student, it kind of gave them a second chance as well. I think it's an outstanding effort to not let one bad decision inform the rest of your life, because I think we've all made at least one bad decision, and many of us maybe haven't paid a price for it, and I think it's an equity issue, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do they do the diversion time? Are they ordered to do any community service?
Um, no, so we are, we're not technically in the court system, so we don't order them to do any type of community service unless it came from a judge. During that time, we just asked that, within those 30 days, we asked that they comply with us by doing that psychosocial, doing an individualized service plan with us, listing their goals, what they want to work on. If they are not cooperative during that 30-day time, then again, they will, the charge will be filed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Is there any way to get, if you, even if you redact the names and addresses, maybe the 65 and older, kind of what the contact cause was, maybe give it to Mr. Mills that he could pass on? Not interested in names, I'm more interested in reasons, because, you know, that's, I think, a particularly, particularly victim type of age group that they can take advantage of, and I want to make sure that they're getting the resources here in the township. Thanks.
Happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
I do want to clarify, let's see, we had 33 contact referrals here in Corrine, one diversion, but we have had 440 interactions with these individuals, so it just kind of speaks to the level of support that's needed to help them. Stable.
Trina, you do a great program. I happened to work with you when I was the program director at the Sheriff's Department, previously with the probation department. It's amazing program. Even at the Justice Center, we created that reentry program part, where the guy, you prepare them to go after the, you know, the guys don't know resource to how to go, where to go, no place to stay, no jobs, but you can prepare them upon the release, we, your caseworkers come and pick them up and stuff, we cut them loose on the street, your caseworker, take them to our office and go through, assign them a case manager, get these guys, you know, go different, you know, law-abiding, law-abiding citizens. And Chief Denny come up with this idea of working with the reentry, I was very excited. You know, it's a very successful program. I think Chief Denny initiated this program in our township. I think we are the pioneer on this, first, the police department did that. You know, this diversion program, it's very successful, and your department did a great job. Thank you.
Corrine, we enjoy working with Chief Denny and his officers.
Yeah, I think the officers also very excited about this, and they know the vision of this program.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. It's great to see you, Ms. Jackson. The next item on the agenda, gentlemen, is a presentation by Chief Denny introducing and swearing in a newly hired police officer, Mr. John McMahon.
This worked out well because we got a brand-new policeman, he now knows what LEAD is, we didn't have to teach him. Killed two birds with one stone. Johnny, would you join me? Our newest officer, John McMahon, is a 2012 graduate of LaSalle High School. He served in the United States Army, I think continues to serve in the Indiana National Guards, is that correct? And is a graduate of the UC Claremont Police Academy, so John has already begun his training and is well on his way, but it's important to bring him in front of you, and we'll swear him in. Who'd you bring with you? You want to introduce your family?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. Excuse me, I'd just like to introduce my mother, Jenny, my dad, Jack, my grandmother, Judy, my sister, Stephanie, my uncle, Tim, my brother, Michael, and my aunt, Tracy. Thank you all for coming out.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John McMahon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the State of Ohio and its bylaws.
Constitution of the State of Ohio and its bylaws.
I will abide by the Corrine Police Department mission and value statement.
I will abide by the Corrine Police Department mission and value statement.
Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics.
Rules and regulations.
Rules of ethics.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Police Department policy and procedure.
Police Department policy and procedure.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
In and for.
In and for.
Corrine Township.
Corrine Township.
Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio.
The State of Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations and welcome aboard, thank you so much.
Welcome, Officer McMahon. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Chief Walls, introducing and swearing in a newly promoted employee, one battalion chief, Shane Packer.
Good evening to the board and those in attendance, and those watching virtually. We're here tonight to introduce and swear in Chief Packer. For some, he probably doesn't need much of an introduction, but for those that don't know, the last 18 months, he's been the face of and brilliantly led the township and the fire department through the COVID-19 pandemic. Before I do start though, I'm going to let him introduce his family and those that are here in attendance, but I was told that he was going to hook the kids up with ice cream as soon as he got done.
Hello, my wife there, our kids, Charles, Colin, and my little Abby, and I'm so happy
Don't forget the ice cream. So, real quick here, Chief Packer was hired in 2005 as a part-time firefighter, paramedic. He's also worked for the Ross Township Fire Department, Union Township Fire Department full-time, where we got him back here to Corrine Township full-time in 2009. He served as a lieutenant, EMS captain, and was approved by the board on August 24th as our newest battalion chief. As I stated earlier, he's done a great job the last 18 months with the pandemic. He has a bachelor of science degree from Columbia Southern University in Fire Service Administration. He likewise has graduated from the Ohio Fire Executive Program in 2015. In my opinion, one of the two premier executive development programs for the fire service. And with no further ado. State after me.
Aye.
Aye. Shane Packer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And its bylaws.
And its bylaws.
I will abide by.
I will abide by.
The Corrine Township Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services.
The Corrine Township Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services.
Mission statement.
Mission statement.
Values.
Values.
Code of Ethics.
Code of Ethics.
Standard operating guidelines.
Standard operating guidelines.
And township's policies and procedures.
And the township's policies and procedures.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of battalion chief.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of battalion chief.
In and for Corrine Township.
In and for Corrine Township.
Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for your continued service, and get rid of that COVID for us, please.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep. Chief Packer, those bugles look good on you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
The next on the agenda, uh, citizen's address. Like always say, I like to have citizens keeping a five minutes so we can have a most valuable, uh, the presentation for your case. Also, the meeting will proceed. So, I have a, Ms. Kathy Moore approached me, and she got a couple more minutes to, to give her time to finish her statements, uh, address. Uh, Kathy Moore, come on, please.
Evening.
Good evening. Um, at the last meeting, I was unable to finish what I had to say, so I'd like to pick up right there. And um, I did approach Raj to ask for a couple extra minutes so that I make sure I get everything in. I think residents should have a chance to voice their concerns for more than five minutes. Uh, residents should get their right to say, just as the board has the right to speak what they feel if it takes over five minutes. Uh, we had to listen to trustee Unger tell stories from twenty to thirty years ago. He was mad because I had pointed out to mistakes made in the minutes last year that he approved. So he said he spent more than sixty hours reviewing minutes prepared by me over thirty years ago and sent pages of what he believed to be errors to the state auditor. Dan, what did you expect the auditor to do?
Miss Kathy, go ahead and.
He'll never answer.
Of, of course, I will during my trustee comments. If you want to keep rolling with this, I will too.
Okay. Uh, what was the purpose of that for something thirty years ago? This is a Ritter tactic. You need to concentrate on what your job is, not what my job was. Next, your cronies will be making accusations about me on Facebook. That's how you work.
I'm not on Facebook.
You are too. Oh, you think anybody buys that? Uh, this is a business meeting, and I don't think bringing up things about residents is proper. So, Dan, you won that seat that you're running for reelection because people didn't want Ritter and Enderhees. You'll lose votes because you are just like Ritter and Enderhees and because of your repert- reputation on the school board. At a previous meeting, Bernie Fetalday criticized the board and administrator for various things. I also criticized regarding getting no answers to questions in public meetings. So I'm giving a warning to everybody out there. If you openly oppose Dan Unger, he will come back at you at a public meeting about something that happened twenty to thirty years ago.
Miss Kathy, uh, no, this is not a political attack. Uh, would you please stay with the, uh, the address?
I'm addressing what.
I, I humbly ask you, please, stay with this, uh, the township matters. Thank you.
Well, this is a township matter. He's a trustee. He's very unprofessional and disrespectful. Residents are not accountable to you. You're accountable to us, and I wish you'd start acting like it. At the last meeting, the board approved two contracts with Plattenburg. I think it's the fourth this year. No amount of the contracts was mentioned. You, our Board of Trustees, responsible for finances, approved two contracts, not knowing what the amount was. That's, and that's not the first time. What is your problem with being transparent? Why do you not let the public know? I see, uh, Mr. Unger claims to be, uh, fist, claims fiscal transparency, and that's pretty funny. You've never been transparent in your four years on the board. I'd like to know what your definition of fiscal transparency is. I see that we are going for requests for proposals for the vacant building maintenance license and vacant foreclosed property registry program. I believe the township entered into an agreement with MuniReg in March. What happened to that? And I believe the banks informed the township when a property is foreclosed on. Uh, an agreement was um approved in July for Merkel Landscaping. What is the status of that? How many times have they cleaned Colrain Avenue right away? And have they depleted their ten thousand dollar contract amount? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next on the list is Vince Lutz, please.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to promote our walk. As you might know or might not know, my wife and daughter were killed instantly as they were taking a Sunday evening walk down by the, what used to be the P and G Building. And um, uh, they were, they were hit by distracted driver. And um, so, uh, actually, this whole thing is my son's idea. So what, what he tried to do was to make a very tragic situation into something positive. So we decided to start a, a, a nonprofit organization to raise money for mental health. Uh, why did we choose mental health? My wife was in education for forty-three years, uh, most of those years being a guidance counselor in a high school. Actually, she graduated from Colrain High School, and then she actually worked at Colrain High School and Northwest High School. She probably told me a hundred times that if we solve all the mental health problems, she wouldn't have a job. So, um, so this is the reason why we, we chose mental health. We give this money to uh an organization. The organization actually goes out and works with homeless. They have caseworkers that goes out on streets, underneath bypasses, underneath bridges, whatever, and works with, with, uh, with those type of people. The organization also does a lot of work in addiction. So, uh, so we've had, we didn't have one last year because of COVID. I think this will be our eighth one, which is Saturday, uh, October ninth, down at Heritage Park on East Miami River Road. And um, so we have, just from grassroots, we've, we've raised like eighty thousand dollars that has given, that was given to these causes for addiction and, and working with homeless and so on and so forth. So, uh, so we're having this walk. It, you know, we call it a walk, but I, I like to uh name it more of a fundraiser because, you know, you don't have to walk. Uh, it's like twenty-five, thirty-dollar, I think it's twenty-five, you register before it's thirty dollars if you uh come to the walk. You can register uh on the internet, and I have, I'll pass these cards out. I have all that information on it. Uh, you don't have to walk. We're going to have like twenty-five baskets, I think, twenty-five, thirty baskets that we've, uh, probably will have. We have to get them all together, but um, so, so, uh, you know, basically, we're looking for money, and it's for a good cause. And uh, so this is, uh, this is the reason why I'm here this evening, and uh, so hopefully you can help us out, and uh, the rest of the people that are here hopefully can help us out as well. So, uh, so thank you for your time, and I will give out these cards, which will give you more information about how to register, and uh, most of the information is, is on here, so. All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you for coming out, and um, so sorry for your loss. It's a wonderful tribute. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Is there a, a phone number on here that somebody could call for more information?
Uh, actually, we have a website.
Okay.
And I think all, if, if you, if you go on the.
It's pathwaytopiecefoundation.org.
Exactly.
Okay, just, these, these meetings are televised and.
Go on that website.
Okay.
I think there'll be more information there than you might want to know, actually.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Lutz.
The next is Mr. Keith Miller, please.
Evening, sir.
Trustees, neighbors, good evening. Well, you know me, I'm going to talk about the past here, because that seems to be where our problems were, and our problems seem to keep evolving from that. I mean, we elect yous to run the room, and I don't think yous have been running the room. Jeff Mills has been running this room. And you know, we elected you. That's not elected a man right there, but he's still running the room. I can't figure it out. So let's talk about the TIFC giveout. Four million dollars to Rumpke, okay? Million dollars to Duke. You know, there's a connection for all five without the Rumpke, because that gas main was run up to that Duke in rise from Rumpke. So technically, Rumpke had his hands in all five million dollars of that TIF. You give out a million, Ritter, and the thing of it is, Ritter gave out four million dollars in Enderhees. Ritter admitted taking Rumpke's money and voting for deals to benefit the dump. So that four million dollar TIF should be revoked because Ritter took Rumpke's money and voted for that deal. So all you taxpayers out there should make sure you avoid, uh, uh, phew, damn, hold on here. You all should go after that money back, you know? Ritter, uh, took Rumpke's money. Dieters wrote that, what do they call it, the Waste Management Program? Dieters helped wrote that with Rumpke while he was our trustee, and that was a no-no, because he's working for the, he's working for Rumpke while he's our voted-for trustee. This is all no-no's. You don't do that stuff. That's screwing the neighbors. So, you know, we need all that corrected. Anything Dieters and Ritter done in this room needs to be revoked and set right because one worked for Rumpke and the other took Rumpke's money. So, you know, what more can I say there? I just want everything corrected. And you know, and I want a board that's working for the people and listening to the people and not listening to Jeff. I mean, Jeff's real, I'm tired. I'm old, I keep coming in here. I'm still under that sixty-five mark.
You look great, kid.
And I'm not going to quit until, uh, things are straightened out. And how about Heather Harlow? Nobody charged Heather Harlow. Sixteen years worth of bad records. She should be jailed. She should have been charged and jailed already. And then the person that done the audit couldn't find it, said it was confusing, and quit. So I want to know who done the audit. Can anybody bring them terms up to me who done the audit and failed us? Because they failed us. The people of Coringue Township got failed by the person that done the audit. What, I, I tend to wonder what they found. Did they find so much money missing, they decided it was too confusing? I mean, I know stories of how much money's, but could be missing, and that's what I want to know, how much money is missing from Heather Harlow's bad records? I mean, I seen Baker, he shows six years, which goes back into Heather's records, and he had no problem figuring that out. So how come the audit quit? I mean, you're the trustees. I mean, you're supposed to be running this room. None of yous care that Heather Harlow kept sixteen years worth of bad records? None of yous? I thank you. Good night.
Thank you, kid. Finally, uh, we have last one, Ms. Judy McMahon.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for listening to me. I think this will be a little bit of change of pace. Uh, these words have been expressed before, but I think they are worth repeating. To the Chief of Police of Colrain Township, Mark Danny, and the officers under his command. You may have been cursed at, spat upon, defunded. You might even, even had to dodge projectiles and disrepect, disrespected. But when called, you will always be there. You will always respond. No sports numbers across your chest, no huge financial contract signed, no personal anthem to stand and salute for. From a grateful community, you have our deep appreciation and respect. May the good Lord be always at your side, and may Michael the Argangel be always, be your wingman. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. That concludes a citizen's address. The next on the agenda is administrative report.
Ms. Rajagopul, um, so as, as we always do, I, I go ahead and answer questions uh that come up in citizen's address. Uh, the questions that I heard from Ms. Moore, um, one had to do with Plattenburg and what were the amounts of the contracts? So we actually publish the contracts in our, um, in our agenda packets, and it, so the contracted amounts are actually in there, and that's, that's what we mean by transparency. So it's. They, so, this isn't, again, this isn't a debate. It's, it's just me answering a question. Um, the board approves things by taking action on them and taking votes in open session, and so they approve or disapprove contracts and motions and resolutions every time they get together. So, um, we, we are very transparent. The amounts are in the contract. We actually put the contracts into our board packets. Um, I don't know another community that is as transparent as we are. The vacant building maintenance license, what happened to MuniReg? I am not satisfied to date with their performance and looking for other options. So we're going out for requests for proposals for other folks to, to do that work for us. As it relates to Merkel and the picking up of trash, I do not have that information available to me right now, um, but perhaps Ms. O'Connell will have that. Um, I didn't hear any questions by Mr. Lutz, and Mr. Miller asked, um, who does our audits? And I think Mr. Miller's path is left. But it's the Auditor of State conducts audits every two years in Colrain Township and in every community, and so they conduct our audits, and then they publish those audits to their website. And so anybody that wants to see our audits, um, you can, you can log on to their website, and you can go back, I don't know how many years, but many years. He suggested that they failed us. I'm not aware of any time when we've been failed. In fact, um, our most recent audit was spectacular, and so we did, we did great, um, and we're proud of that. So, I think, and thank you, Mrs. McMahon. I think she might have taken off too. That was very kind of you to say. We are approaching, um, the end of our, our two meetings a month. So next month will be the, um, the last month in which we have two meetings until April of next year. Uh, we'll go down to one meeting a month through the holidays and winter. Lots going on. This is a, a very exciting time of year when we're developing our, um, our budget and our strategic plan for next year. I would encourage everyone to, uh, come out and take part in, in our town hall meeting next Monday, uh, where we'll be discussing, uh, budget and priorities. Two weeks ago, on a Monday, we had a town hall that, to talk about the strategic plan and got a, a lot of great ideas. Looking forward to hearing more ideas about, about budget. That concludes my administrative report, unless you have questions for me, and I'll.
I had a couple questions.
Sure, yes. Sure, yes.
Um, the, I'd ask about, and I don't know that you've looked at it yet, the flags around kind of the, up and down the Springdale, the Administrative Center for special occasions like nine eleven, Veterans' Day coming up, things like that. I had noticed, had you had a chance to look into that?
I'm sure that we can get that done, yep.
And thank you for putting, we're gonna talk about a request for proposal on the, the bid form for removing trash abatement and things like that. Thanks for moving the ball forward on that. I mean, it, I think that it's amazing because we keep just pushing and pushing and it feels like we're trying to empty the sea with a, with a teaspoon here. And I, I gave you a number of things, I don't know if any of them work or not, or if you wanna kind of follow up on, on things, whatever, trash cans, but just kind of, and I get the sense this is this way anyway, that this is an ongoing discussion within the departments on what we can do to continue to push this. Is that, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other thing that we're moving into, and this might be more of a Ms. O'Connell question, is kind of the landscape and, and working on things, especially the exit. Do we have a report on that?
Yep, I believe so.
Okay, so I'll hold that. Thank you so much for organizing the recycle day. That's another, just another effort to kind of, and again, so I, every morning I drive through the city of Cincinnati and the trash there is, you go up like Grand Avenue or Quebec Road and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty substantial and I think part of it is I'm keyed into it now, but just a plea for people out there, don't dump your stuff. I, I don't understand the thought process of people dumping in their own community. I mean, we have a, a place now that at one point had a, had a donation bin. The donation bin was taken out and people continued to dump. I mean, it, it's amazing. They dumped in the empty, empty parking lot and it's just frustrating and, you know, I know that trustee Raj Gopal has, has done some efforts to alleviate that particular one, but just my plea to, to stop, but thank you for, for everything you're doing to keep advancing this. Yeah, I'm done, sorry.
Very good. I think that's a good segue to, Ms. O'Connell, do you have an administrative report this evening?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Thanks. If you could just, it, it could be very brief. One of the things that I wanted to, you gave kudos to the township for the recycle day. It was an incredible event and as Ms. O'Connell will likely tell you, it was the most used recycle day in recent memory, maybe in history. Maybe we made history on Saturday.
I don't know about history, but recycle day, we did see more stuff brought in, more items recycled than we have in anybody's recent memory. Filled more dumpsters with trash, filled more dumpsters with tires than we have. We had 660 vehicles pull through, 25 employees helping, two volunteers, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Raj Gopal. And like I said, 660 vehicles. Some people came through once, some people came through more than once, but it was a beautiful day after the rain stopped and lots of stuff, good stuff got recycled and cleaned up. So that was good. We also had on September 18th, Heritage Park was a site for the Great Miami River Cleanup. That is, a different group sponsors that event, but we support them with bringing in items for them and helping them haul things out. They hauled out 14 volunteers that day, hauled out 30 tires and 15 yards of trash from the river around Heritage Park alone. The Snowplow Rodeo, it's a, is an event where our snowplow drivers get to go and test their, show off their skills and abilities with the snowplow. And Craig Reiman, one of our employees, placed second of all other township governments in the county, so we're very proud of Craig. Pickleball, an update with pickleball. The court has been poured for a while and it's finally getting painted. Our low bidder, it took a while for him to get here. So first coat's going on this week, second coat will follow shortly thereafter, then the fence and we will be ready to play some pickleball.
Are you gonna play?
Am I gonna play? I will cheer heartily from the sidelines. Colrain Park Playground. So we have got the new Fort Colrain Playground in. The new, the old existing Colrain Park Playground needs to be decommissioned. It is beyond its useful life. So I am just giving you all a heads up and per this report that at some point in the near future, we would like to remove the, the old playground. The, we've got a couple upcoming events. One is the Cincinnati Warriors Cricket, Cricket Team is having a, their first tournament down at Dravoe Park this weekend. Saturday and Sunday, 2:00 PM is the finals, so head on down to Dravoe and see what cricket's all about. It may surprise you. October 9th is Give Back Day. Mr. Walls, our Chief Walls, may have more information about that, but check out the website, so come out and help your neighbors clean up Colrain. And speaking about cleanup Colrain, we checked Circle article that came out a week or so ago, checked the website. We are asking residents to sign up to adopt a piece of their neighborhood to keep it clean and then report back to us on how they're doing so that we can keep up on, on just the, the trash that happens to accumulate through the township. Regarding the Merkel contract, they have been out once, they've picked up once so far. They only bill us when they pick up, so they do not bill us the entire amount of the contract. The contract was a, a max amount, so they bill us per pickup. They're picking up approximately every three weeks, but they've only been out once so far to my knowledge. I've received one bill and actually I'm holding the bill till I get the stats from them on how much they picked up because they're going to report that back to us.
Thanks for the report. You did an amazing job on the recycling day, organizing all our staff and a lot of staffs were there. It, it, like you said, non-stop, the, the people bringing unbelievable stuff. You cleaned up almost half the Colrain chunks in the basement.
I think we did.
Yeah, basement and the garage and our staff, they did a remarkable job and, and working tirelessly, you know, non-stop. I think that's the best program, one of the best program Colrain Township come up with. Like I said, it's unbelievable. All the other ways you've been sitting there in the Colrain backyard or the, in the garage and, and thank you, you and Tawana did a nicely organize this project.
It was event coordinator, Tawana Multer's baby and she ran with it and, you know, our staff worked tireless hours, but we had staff from almost every department help us out that day. So it was definitely full court press and a team effort.
It is, it is a great team effort. Also, I want to thank you for, you know, made that Bravo Park and the cricket. Now they're having, like I said, the cricket match tournament, people coming from everywhere, from Toledo, Columbus, always wait for Michigan and you put Colrain Township in the map and that's amazing and thank you so much for doing that. And also they're gonna have a soccer tournament in October 23rd. That's a regional soccer tournament. So that Bravo, Dravoe Park is very, very, you know, now it's, it's a lie. Thank you so much for all the help you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more things I just want to point out before Jackie leaves. One is, we have, there's a purchase order in your box for the first, excuse me, the first set of materials for the I-275 landscaping piece. And then the second thing is, on the horizon is the street tree project in Northbrook. So one of the things that was identified in the Northbrook Now Strategic Reinvestment Plan was street trees. That's also one of the things that our business community has gotten behind and is part of the Team Up to Green Up Initiative through the Chamber and the Township. And so we have hopefully about 80 trees that will be going in on Niagara and it's an opt-out program. It'll be a partnership with Northbrook, Greater Northbrook to put door hangers on everybody's doors on, on Niagara and if you don't want a tree in front of your yard, you have to opt out and tell us that you don't want that and we will not put it there. But if not, we plan to put as many trees on, on Niagara as possible. This is made possible through community development block grant dollars, a recent grant that we received from Duke Energy Foundation. There's I think $10,000 in there from the township budget and then the Chamber is currently trying to raise an additional $10,000. So lots of outside money that will hopefully transform that neighborhood and, and really affect positive change in Northbrook.
Thank you.
You said be brief, so I was holding back on that one till next morning.
Sorry.
The Gateway Project, yes, we are for the landscaping, we are neck deep into planning that. The, we've got the plans drawn up, we've got the materials specked, costed out and have secured, are working on securing the purchase orders hopefully after tonight for the materials for that. Now we're just in a logistical, the logistical phase of coordinating how to get to the work sites with ODOT and potentially revising some of the work sites because some of those areas are a little steep and a tad treacherous to get to, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work. I had a couple additional questions. A skate park, is that open? I haven't been down there. It was closed for a while, I guess?
It was closed for maintenance.
Okay, and that's back open?
But it was only closed for like a week back in, oh heck, June or July. It's, it's been a bit. It's been open since then.
So any report on the speed devices and...
That is Chief Danny's wheelhouse. So I will let him take that glory or actually I think it's probably next meeting as we're gonna report out.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, just want to know.
And the other thing, I'm just throwing this out there, it could have a million reasons why it's a bad idea, but I know that one thing that we did, and again, this is maybe an option to reduce, you know, dumping and littering, is that the big dump truck, you could rent that from the, the city in North College Hill where the public works would drop it off and I think it was $75 for a 24-hour period. You put what you want in it and then they drove it away. That might be an answer to people, I mean, there could be people that just are doing this kind of stuff because they got no way of getting rid of, getting rid of stuff. I don't know if that's an option that we can look at doing something similar or even use North College Hill, I don't know. Or, and there, there could be a million reasons not to do it, there could be insurance questions and things like that. But I know that that was pretty successful. In fact, I used it once for building materials because it's just not easy to get a truck and, and that, it's really not easy now. And thank you so much for, for everything that, that you're doing and I, I look forward to the 275 project.
Well, if I need somebody to work a shovel, I'm gonna give you a call.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Chief Walls, do you have a presentation? No, okay. That concludes our administrative reports.
Okay, the next on the agenda is Trustees Reports. Any trustee want to go first? Go ahead, Dan.
I think you go ahead.
Thank you, Raj. For those watching the meeting, we had a presentation, a work session between 6:00 and 7:00 this evening on tax increment financing, so you should be able to go on the Waycross website and go back and watch that. The recycling day was quite successful and I actually counted 604, so I guess we're a little bit different on our numbers, but there was just an absolute unending amount of stuff brought up there. A couple of weeks ago, and as I always do, I tell people to call me if they, they need anything and I say 404-3057. I've gotten more calls in the last two weeks than in the whole time I've been up here. I guess people are really getting on board with cleaning up the community. Every one of them's been, all of them but one have been a code enforced, on code enforcement and I've been talking to you about them and talking to Mr. Weckbach. Going back to some of the citizen comments about transparency and, you know, Mr. Unger isn't transparent. I've been here for four years and I was fortunate enough to start out in 2018 as president of the board. One of the biggest complaints was the agendas weren't published until the day before the meeting. Within the first month, we, we got all the staff together and the departments and now the agendas are published by 5:00 on Friday, a full 96 hours before the meeting. That had never been done before and, and that is transparency. So people have four days, including the weekend before the meeting, to look at what's gonna be brought up. So, so to say there's no transparency is in contradiction to what there actually is. Previous boards of trustees had sometimes scheduled meetings during the day and, and, you know, in the afternoon when people couldn't show up and I can go back through the, all the minutes we have archived on our website and see those, those inconvenient meetings that were scheduled. This board, since, since Raj started in 18 and I did too, we've always scheduled our meetings at night. And I realize there's people that work at night, but one of the other things we did was bring in Waycross to make sure a neutral third party was producing the meetings and, or, you know, filming them and there was no editing or anything from the trustees. Waycross does that and, and we don't have a say-so in, in any editing at all. Their broadcast is raw footage and archived the same way. So, so once again, to say there's no transparency, we don't have daytime or morning meetings. Our meetings with these, this board of trustees is in the evening and as far as transparency, one of the other initiatives that we were successful in is you can go right on our homepage and click on the transparency portal and just about every statistic, whether it's crime data or finances or anything, is right there on the transparency portal. So, so once again, to say there's no transparency, you know, go ahead and look at the website and it's right there. One of the other comments was, was quit going into the past and that speaker, the first thing they do is bring up trustees from the past, trustee Ritter and trustee Enderhees, obviously I ran against them, but if we're not going into the past, I don't understand why their names keep coming up. The Plattenburg thing, and I, I did address that to the same speaker in the last meeting is, it's in the agenda, the, the contract was. And that's why we post the agendas 96 hours ahead of time so you can see them. And like I said, that was never done previously and other trustees had their reasons and fortunately we're in the age of technology when we can get the agendas out there that early. So I, once again, I know we have several tax increment for financing proposals on the agenda tonight and those that, that didn't get to see our presentation or our work session from 6:00 to 7:00, please go back and have a look at it. Thank you to everyone who's watching and thank you to everyone who's here. And I, anybody that's been in Colrain Township for a while is probably familiar with the Lutz family situation that happened and, and even though it's a couple of years old, are my deepest sympathy to them and I'm, I'm glad they're having the, the pathwaytopiecefoundation.org event, so if you need any more information on that, please have a look. And Judy, Judy McMahon, those are very kind words and, and our police department and all of us certainly appreciate it, so thank you. Thanks, Raj.
Thank you, Dan. Matt, do you want to go?
Sure. I just have a few things. A big thanks to Compton Recycling. I got pictures from them yesterday afternoon, I think they, I, I don't know if you've seen Mr. Mills, the, they paid to have the entire weeds pulled back by Pippin, all the way, I think down to the, to the, the drive-through. Is that still open, the drive-through? Okay. I, I think that's where they, all the way down. So thank you so much for that. Just a reminder to people, we're off-cycle for the next meeting, which is now, do you have the date in front of you? Because I don't.
October 5th.
Okay, October 5th. It normally would be the 12th, it's the 5th and we made that change last time and, and thanks for, thanks for helping me out with that change. Also, I had a interesting, several discussions with ODOT about two weeks ago as I crawled up Colrain Avenue behind the biggest heavy load truck I've ever seen in my life. I don't know what it was, but it was so large that, that they needed, they had Duke Energy with poles lifting up the wires so it wouldn't knock down. And of course, as I'm sitting in traffic, my first call is to Chief and I'm like, what's going on? He goes, nobody told us. And, and I'm like, wow. Not that you can fix closing six lanes or four lanes wherever you're at at Colrain, but I think that there's a better way. There's a way to kind of, I think our police with some notice could, and Mr. Mills could at least get it out to the people so that we know. And I had a long discussion with ODOT and I, I guess what they do is they rely on the contract, the heavy load sign contractors to inform the public and that's not gonna happen anymore. And in fact, I haven't checked with you, but the next day you should have gotten an alert that says, we're gonna start early in the morning again. Did, did you?
It's in my inbox, but I do have a special inbox for who, so I'll have to check that out.
Okay, okay. And, and I know I talked to Sheriff Jones about that and Butler, because I was gonna go through Butler next because it literally, I, I don't know, what was it? Do we know?
No idea.
Okay. Yeah, 4:00 on Colrain Avenue and their, their, their permit expired at 4:00 and they're like, we're running behind and I said, well, I don't care. And at one point I asked, I think, Mr. Mills if, if Colrain Police could cite the Ohio State Patrol because it's, you know, the permit says 4:00, get off the road. So I think we've got that ironed out and I think that they heard me and my frustration at, at not being included in that, so hopefully that won't happen again, although this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, moving, I don't know, some kind of ICBM down Colrain Avenue or something. And just a thanks to everybody and, and the staff, police, fire, the public services, administration and thanks today, as I see him working with the minutes every week, Mr. Baker, for the hard work that he does too, because he's kind of the unthanked guy, it seems like sometimes. Yeah, so that's the end of my report. Have a good weekend. It should be a beautiful weekend for college and football and pro football on Thursday night and concerts in the pit on Thursday night.
Thank you, Matt. I want to thank you for organizing this walk. It's a great tribute to our family and also a great thing for our township all Thank you, Matt. I want to thank you for organizing this walk. It's a great tribute to our family and also a great thing for our township all come together to honor this, you know, victim. And I think it's going to be very successful. So, I want to, again, I mentioned earlier that this first time now recently, we see that great teamwork, like Jackie mentioned about Colrain Township's staff working together, all the department, fire, police department, public works, everything. And it is shown during the recycling day, everybody worked so hard. I get the chance to, opportunity to work with them. It was, it was, it was forewarming to see these people. They, they got a, not only they're just doing that, they have a passion really for our township. That's, that's remarkable thing, and we thank you, thank the staff for that, having this such a teamwork. And also, you know, we are, if you've seen the agenda, we are very aggressive on all the litter control, the litter, people trashing our township up. I met with the, our environment, the county environmental services. We bought some camera, I happen to be in the committee also. We bought some cameras. We're installing the cameras mostly like a dumping area. So, I also met with the judge, the municipal court judge, the housing court, Judge Bernie Breschard. Then I told him, anybody coming dumping this place in Colrain, they'll come to your court, take care of them, you know. And he says, yeah, I'm going to go harsh on these people who are dumping this. So, what I'm trying to say is we're all coming together. The township, also our great police officer, Andrew Floyd, our environmental officer, or also the sheriff's department, Ryan Peak, and they also, he's also hired by the environmental services. These two guys are working very close to each other. So, I'm going to meet with them. So, what they're going to do, they aggressively, where the camera is going to take all the pictures of the people who are illegally dumping that, and we're going to cite them. And also, same time, we're going to notify the, the business owners. You also responsible. You got to take some cam. The one, one business, I told them, you got to start putting the camera around our building. So, he agreed, and he's going to do that, putting a camera. So, we're going to go after the business owners also about, take the responsibility where these people are dumping all this illegal stuff, dumping all the garbage. So, that's a one step forward with the, all the things. I think you have some abatement. We're hiring people for the purpose. One of the goal, twenty-twenty-one strategic goal is a clean beautification of Colrain, clean Colrain, beautification of Colrain. That's what Jeff Mills told about buying trees and planting trees around the Colrain Township. And also, I want to thank Debbie Horst, and she hired some people, own people, to cut the weeds around the Pippin Road, you know, growing tall people can walk. And they're the, our own residents taking pride in making our place a better place to live. So, that's also the last week, the Ameren County Probation Department Community Service Program, Jody Lees, she's the chief in the community relations. She sent the two vans to clean up Pippin Road, Compton Road, everything. They collected numerous, you know, the bags, and Jeff, you're going to send people to collect all the bags left over there. So, these are the positive way that taking our township to the direction to make the Colrain Township clean and beautiful. And also, I want to announce the next, I think, October twelfth meeting, and make a great announcement we will make. I'm working with some venues about bringing back the Colrain Day. You know, we used to have the Colrain, Taste of Colrain, and we are going to, I'm going to make it like a Colrain Day. And, and this gentleman, he'd be a surprise, who is, we're going to invite, he's going to announce, and he's going to have this own venue and make it a great day, Colrain Day. We need that festivities in our, in our township. So, these are the good things happening in our township. We are moving forward. And then also, you know, going around the people, all the seeing, all the trash places, and, you know, make it a better place to live. I want to tell, this two area, twenty-nine ninety-three, Wheatfield Drive, you know, it's right in front of that address. The whole house is looking dumped over there. Are we, what are we going to do?
What was the address?
I actually think that got cleaned up. Twenty?
I saw that when I was driving around, and the Nordbrook area is unbelievable pile of all the junk.
Must be another house down the street. I think that's another house down the street.
Yeah, twenty-nine ninety-eight. Also, same situation, corner of Libra or Burgess.
That one's been cleaned up.
No, I saw the last Friday, I think, like Thursday or something, pretty much Saturday or something like that. There's a whole pile there. So, if you can take care of that. So, thank you. Thank you for, you know, the public works and everybody working together, and now the, the police department involved in the code enforcement. It's a great teamwork. Thank you.
Mr. Raj Kapal, I just want to correct you one thing. You said the twelfth. It's actually, that meeting's the fifth.
Oh, no, fifth and twelfth, right? Two, two meeting in October?
Fifth and?
Nineteenth.
No.
Or twenty-sixth.
It's the fifth and then the fourth, Thursday, Tuesday.
The twelfth was supposed to be our regular meeting. That's why we changed to the fifth.
To the fifth, yeah.
Fifth, okay. All right.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
There it is.
Thank you.
All right. I'll bring that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, change the date, and we'll make announcement.
Yes.
On this Colrain Day. I think people will be excited about that.
Okay.
Our residents. It'll be a great festivities. Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Matt. And so, what's the next on the agenda? Is there any more trustees reports? Add anything?
No.
The new business.
Yes, sir. First items of new business are from our public safety department, specifically our police department, and those will be presented by Chief Denny.
Logan, I have two items. The first is recommend adoption of a motion to authorize administrator to release a request for proposals for trash abatement services. Currently, when you declare a trash nuisance, we have to do a procurement process to find a vendor to take care of that abatement. So, this will allow us to send out for bids to get some companies on, on board for that.
I would motion that we approve the request for proposals.
I'd actually, I think I have a superseding motion to amend.
I wanted to amend it. I mean, I want to go through that in discussion. I saw something in there I didn't like either, but I want to get it to the floor.
Okay. I think procedurally, we, we motioned to amend it, argue the amendment, and then motion to, to deal with, to deal with the, the resolution.
What's, what's the right way to do that?
Sounds correct.
What he's saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so if you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my initial motion.
So, my, my, I would like to, and this is coming from my background of working under, I guess, some Tommy Lasorda, twenty-five one-year contracts. In it, it calls for a three-year contract with a mutual extension for a year. I, I think that, and what I've seen from some vendors, Muni Reg would be one, and there have been several others, that I would prefer a one-year, a year-to-year with a renewable year upon mutual agreement. So, my amendment would be to change the three to a one, and, and those would be the reasons why.
And I will second it to get it to the floor.
Okay. So, now we're discussing the amendment of changing it from three to one year with a mutual extension for a year.
And I had something that I wanted to amend also. So, I guess I, can I do that under the same discussion? On the awards part, and I had talked to you about this last week, Jeff, if we award to one vendor and they get busy and can't be as quick and responsive, and I'll use the example of the Metropolitan Sewer District, when they do their emergency sewer repair contract, they'll award to three vendors. The first one gets, the low gets fifty percent of the work, the second gets thirty percent, and the third gets, gets twenty percent. And that way, they're spreading the work out a little bit, and if you get busy on a project and can't get to the next project, at your discretion, you can go to the next vendor just to get something done. And the house that's over there on, on Wheatfield, now I know which one Raj is talking about. I think that lady got evicted, and all of her stuff is sitting out in the driveway, because I saw it there Saturday, Sunday.
Which address was that?
It's right at the end of Wheatfield. It's the last house.
Twenty-nine ninety-eight.
Twenty-nine.
That was, actually, our code enforcement officer is watching this on television, and he says that John tagged that house. That's John Schussler. He's our part-time code enforcement officer, and it's, service number is TRSH twenty-one forty-nine.
Okay.
How about this, corner of Libra and Burgess?
That one has, that one has been abated. I recall that. That was a set, that was a set out there.
Well, my point on the changes, though, that way we would, when we go to, and it says in here, the way you have this evaluation criteria, it will be evaluated to determine the lowest and best bidder. I would just suggest you make a, when this comes back, if we get any responses, that we consider awarding to a, one or two backup vendors so that we have somebody on deck to take care of these things, because once you put all that stuff out in the weather, it gets, it starts spreading out, just like that one on Dunraven a couple of weeks ago. I would have liked to have had somebody there right away, and I realize we couldn't. But, but, so that would be my change, is just to have the possibility of a multiple award. Got it.
So, respectfully, would that be not really in the bid proposal, just be a statement that the township will consider backup bidders for overflow work or something like that? Is that?
Okay.
So, so I will second that as a friendly amendment to the?
Well, that way, it's actually functional then.
Right.
If we get busy, we have somebody, a backup person to call.
So, I, I think that we need to actually vote on both amendments separately.
Okay.
I think. Mr. Dieter, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I'd like to hear from the chief and from Mr. Mills on the utilitarianism of both of our amendments. I mean, maybe there's something that one of us, on one of our amendments is missing that's going to really screw things up.
That's fine. I think the three-year to one-year is no problem, and I think that awarding multiple bidders is no problem. So, thanks for making that happen.
So, I think we didn't vote on the first, the first amendment, which is changing three to one.
And since that's already at the floor with no other comments, I guess?
Roll call vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye. Now, at this point, I think we vote on the second amendment, which is to change it to, I forget the exact wording. I use?
Possible multiple award.
Words for overflow work or something. So, we'll call the question.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye. Now, at this point, I will motion to approve the amended, the amended resolution, the amended motion. I'll motion to approve the amended motion as amended twice.
I'll second it. For the, I'll second it for the RFP for trash abatement services for anybody that's following along at home.
Okay. Any discussions? Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Okay. So, that concludes, go ahead, chief.
Chief, this is. Final item is recommend adoption of a resolution allowing for the removal of uncontrolled vegetation and/or refuse at the following properties: twenty-four fifty-nine Berthbrook, thirty-seven thirty-four Brockton, ninety-six eighty-five Dunraven, seventy-three ninety East Miami River Road, twenty-eight thirty-two John Rose, ninety-five eighty-five Laurel Linda, thirty-two twenty-seven Niagara, ten-two one-three Pottinger, and eighty-five eighty-two Sunlight.
I'll motion to declare the, the properties listed a nuisance in ordering abatement.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
Not from me.
Chief, thanks a lot for doing this aggressive, you know, abatement program.
Good people on it. They're doing a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, chief. All right. The next item of new business comes from our public services department, and that will be presented by Mrs. Jackie O'Connell.
Good evening, board. I have one item before you tonight. It's the resolution accepting the Copper Creek Lane as a Colrain Township road. We recommend adoption of this resolution. The Hamilton County engineer acts as our township engineer in all new developments, as you know. They, they have turned over, are ready to turn over Copper Creek Lane to us. The Office of Planning and Development confirms the developers met the county specs and said the developer requests the road be turned over to the township, and the township accept the roadway. So, I ask that you adopt the resolution.
I'll motion to get it to the floor to resolve accepting Copper Creek Lane as a Colrain Township road.
I second it.
So, my issue with this, and I'm kind of relying a little bit on Mr. Unger's road expertise, is that they've met the county standards, but have they met the township standards?
The township standards in this case are the county standards, because the county is the engineer and they, they drive these specs. So, they drive the development. They, they validate that the developer has followed the specs. So, I did include, we were going to do core samples. The county had already done core samples, so I included that in the packet, because there, there has been questions about the quality of that road. The Planning and Development Office, however, assures me that it meets their specifications and is up to their standards.
I appreciate the effort to circumvent that question by saying that they meet the county standards. I think I have, I think I have an issue with being sold a road that's going to be, that needs improvement soon. For the, you know, I, I don't know. Maybe it's more appropriate to find out what our options are on this, but as it is now, I have no intention of voting yes on that. Just no offense to you, but just that I believe that, that we're being sold some quality that's, that's maybe not quite up to our standards.
And I've, I've got a comment as well. Copper Creek is down off Sheet Road by Gaines, and it's actually the first one that was started during my term. So, I have watched it and, and watched it develop. There's some beautiful homes up there. About a year and a half ago, this, I went up there, and the pavement, when you get to the top of the hill, going maybe the last hundred feet into the cul-de-sac turnaround, the pavement does not meet the curb. It is, there's nothing wrong with the asphalt. I would contend that there's no base or not the correct amount of base material underneath it. I purposely stopped up there at five o'clock today on my way to this meeting to take one more look at it, and this was repaired a couple of years ago. And as of today, that last hundred feet going into the cul-de-sac looks like this. And I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I'm not an engineer, and I would, I would suggest that there's another engineer that takes, that there's an engineer that takes a look at it, but I believe there is a substantial subgrade problem there, and there's about a hundred-foot stretch of it that probably, I'm not going to make any engineering comments, but it needs to be looked at. The, what I found out with Magnolia Woods, which had been started before I got here, and when that came up for approval, I went up and took a look at that and looked down in the catch basins. You could see where the, the outlet pipes that go from the catch basin downstream to the end of the drainage, they were not mortared in. There was concrete and mix, which has nothing to do with, with you or us. It has to do with the process before it gets to us. And I voted no on that, and subsequent, there was a meeting with the county engineer and said, guess what? Under the ORC, you have to accept these. And, and they gave us a one-year warranty on that street, and I guess this will start the clock for a one-year warranty on the street. Is that how it works?
That is correct.
I would be more inclined to support it after, after that stretch going into the, into the cul-de-sac is evaluated and potentially repaired, because it was already fixed a year and a half ago, and it's back to the condition that it was in a year and a half ago, the last time I suggested there would be a fix to it. So, I don't, they're beautiful. So I don't, they're beautiful homes up there. There are still several building lots, and to build those houses, you need to run, I would say there needs to be sixty loads of concrete up there to finish out the other six or seven foundations that are going to eventually go. And those concrete trucks are heavy, and they're legally loaded, but they will probably destroy the rest of that pavement. And I think you had the example of another street in the township that was a county spec that is, needs some serious repair. And, and this is a brand-new street, Copper Creek. And, and as everybody knows, we have a lot of other streets that are in line in front of that. So, and the developer's probably watching. And, and thank you for building such a nice set of houses in our township, but that, that street is, it needs to be fixed before I would support accepting it. So...
So here's what I will tell you, because we did have that conversation. I didn't notice the andulations last time I was up there, because they milled, they milled off the two inches and they resurfaced it a couple of months ago. But they, they did the, okay. So they did, they, what they tell us is they did the core sample and it meets all of their specs, specifications. The, you know, the twofold issue that needs some discussion is, one, they're engineered, they're, they're specs. We go with what they say and their specs dictate. Secondly, there is no rule in those specs that says how far in or how much must be developed before we, before the developer asks us to accept the street. They could ask us to accept it in ten-yard increments, a hundred-yard increments. It doesn't matter. And it doesn't matter how many houses are beyond that. So we have several subdivisions within the township, older subdivision, newer subdivision built behind it. The bevy of trucks going back and forth with concrete, with lumber, with everything, has eroded those streets beyond their life because of the development happening in the back, which has no consequence to the developer.
I completely understand that. I completely understand that.
That's, that's a great point, Jackie, that you just made. Because I, I don't know, week or ten days ago, I also drove by, it's beautiful, beautiful homes. We need homes like that in our township. Now, then you go up the hill, it's got mountains of all this gravel piled up, all this, you know, I don't know...
Because there's a private drive beyond that.
Yeah. It's mountains, you know, almost like little mountains. Now, my question is, you know, have township involved in the private, you know, development like this? What's the cost incurred to the township?
If we accept the street?
Yes.
So after a year, the cost incurred to the township is maintaining the street. So we would right away begin assuming snow removal expense. We would, we would hope that we wouldn't have to incur any other expense on that road in terms of surfacing for twenty or more years. However, we have some developments that have had streets fail with, before twenty years have been up, before their useful life has, has been up. So...
So right now, the developer will put all the roads and everything needed after the, after the development is completed, then township will...
No. No, go ahead.
Couple of things. No, it would be like now. So the development is about half completed, and they want us to accept the road now. As I, just, I just want to throw this out there. As I listen to the board deliberate on this, I get the sense that there might not be an appetite to adopt this resolution. I would suggest that instead of, if that is the case, instead of voting against the resolution, if you could table it so that we could get with our law director and better understand our options as it relates to accepting roads. I would, I would appreciate that. That would be my recommendation.
I, I like that. Because, like I mentioned about, now the, the, the development is initial. We want the development for the township, but it's initial. Now you can take over. Now they, like you mentioned about, all the trucks will be going, plumbing, you and you and other bulldozers and all this stuff going now again. And we'll be spending tons of money on that. I would, I would like to table this, please.
So I, I considered that when I brought this up, knowing that I would be voting no for it. I considered a table. And, and I guess, I still may consider it, but I guess my position on it is to send a clear message that our expectations of the county and developers and what they are, and that we're not going to allow, allow these costs to be passed on to our taxpayers when it doesn't meet, meet our standards. Now, with that said, I can certainly, I see the, the usefulness of a table so that we can get, instead of my emotional response, a clinical lawyer-like response to it. And I could still vote no in a week and still send that message. And for that reason, I'm going to withdraw my motion to, to accept, motion to accept the resolution to accept Copper Creek. I'm gonna withdraw that motion in...
Still like to discuss before you...
Okay. Well, then I, okay, I'll hold off then till you're finished.
Let's table this.
I wanna, I wanna make another comment. I, I realize, at the end of the day, we are compelled to accept this. My issue with it is, is that I am telling you, when those folks get up there in those nice expensive homes, and I was just there at five o'clock, and if there's a way to share this picture with you, I mean, it's clear as anything that the street's going like this. And in fact, the best thing to do is, is go look at these when it's dark out and shine your headlights across it, and that's the best way to, to see it. It's, it's dark out on the way home from here tonight. And, and the thing is, is later in the agenda, we are going to consider a resolution to have Copper Creek as a tax increment finance district. Well, at that point, we would need to take all the tax increment financing dollars off that street and put them in a separate account just to redo that road. Because it's going to, I don't think the folks that eventually buy the houses there are going to be satisfied with the street. So, and it's nothing to do with anybody here. It's, like I said, the county's asking us to accept it right now. And, and if this was my driveway or some work somebody had done at my house or a public street, I wouldn't accept it either way. So...
If, if I could just respond to Mr. Unger's point, I understand that typically that we're forced through, to accept this through the county or through the state. But I would also suggest that that's why we have a system of governance, is federalist, because we're protected, our rights are protected by local and state governments. And, and that, I'm acting as a sentinel over the rights of everyone else, as James Madison would say, by saying, I'm not gonna accept this, this, this street or Copper Creek Lane as a, as a township road. And in doing so, I'm protecting the interests of everyone in all townships under the same circumstances. But I get, you know, I think that the county is used to getting what the county wants because the county rattle's, they're, they're soared a little bit. That doesn't mean that we have to take a road. We're voting on a road that already needs fixed. I, I can't imagine in any circumstances would I would ever want to do that. But that said, has everyone else spoken on withdrawal then?
Well, I don't want anything but to have it fixed. This is not a tack on anybody or any, anything. I will email, I guess the best way to handle this as a public record is to email it to Jeff, and he can send it back to the three of us and to you. But I mean, I invite you to look at it. It's, I don't know if you can see it from there or not.
I can not see it from there.
Okay. The, it's just not, this is at five o'clock today, and I, I thought, I'm gonna go look at that before we vote on it. And it's nothing personal, it's just, the, the folks, when they finally move in on that street, they are gonna be calling you and hounding you to get it fixed. And, and to you, I'm gonna say, Jackie, I got this whole other list of people whose streets haven't been touched in fifteen or twenty years. And, you know, I hate to tell these people that, hey, we'll fix it in two thousand forty-nine or something, because that's not...
That's probably even optimistic at this point.
Right.
You guys can appreciate our perspective, right? Because we have to, this, we, it says we have to rely on the Hamilton County engineer as our engineer.
Completely. Like I said, it's nothing personal. It's just...
We're not suggesting to you that we should. We're saying that our engineer is, who also does the inspections, is telling us that this is what we have to do. And so that's where we're coming from. And I completely understand where you're coming from. If you guys table it, it'll allow us to work with our, our law director to identify ways to get to what I understand.
There is, there is some kind of soft subgrade problem up. I'm not an engineer. Engineer, there is a soft subgrade problem up there. The pavement's not unraveling or falling apart. The asphalt is, is a mix of tar and sand and gravel, and it looks like it's bound together very well. It just goes like this. And that's indicative of, of a subgrade problem. I'm not...
At this point, I withdraw my resolution accepting Copper Creek Lane as a Corrine Township Road. And at this point, we could have a second if there's more discussion.
I'll second it to withdraw the motion.
All right.
So we, I guess we vote on that.
All right. You know, like, one more comment I want to make, the mention about some of the roads, you know, township. For example, the, the Spirit Ridge Road, Mr. Mills also come and look at it, is bad, very, very bad. There's, the concrete is popping up, and the people living there for thirty, forty years, and they're the long-term residents. And streets like that, you know, we, we owe them. You know, that's our duty to take care of the, the people living there thirty, forty years. And that road is very bad condition, and Mr. Mills saw that. And we offer residents, we can do with the skip program, we help them. That's another discussions. But anyway, now, I, I think this situation right now, we'll table this.
So...
So I think we need a vote?
Table the...
We have a motion, a motion by me and a second by Unger.
Okay. We draw the motion.
Okay. So now we need a, yeah, you're right. We need a, I motion to table it.
All right. I second it. Discussions?
Already seconded that motion.
Already seconded. Go ahead. No further discussion?
He, he motioned to table. I seconded his motion to table.
And there was a discussions. Now call for the vote.
Withdrawal. Withdrawal.
Now we have a motion to table.
And I thought I seconded the motion to table.
Okay. We already made the discussions.
I seconded the motion to table.
Go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Jackie, I'll send that to Jeff and head on up there and take a look at it tomorrow because it's...
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. The next items of new business are from our Development Department. We have spent the better part of an hour this evening, from six until about six forty, talking about tax increment financing districts, about property taxes, how they work, about how this tax increment finance district works. We talked about how this does not reduce the property tax that's paid by anybody, it just changes who the property tax goes to. It keeps local tax dollars local and allows for those new revenues to be spent on the laundry list of, of things that are included in the resolution. So I would encourage anyone with any further questions about tax increment finance district to go review that tape or just give me a call. But we, we now have before you seven resolutions establishing seven TIP districts. And so I will begin by recommending the adoption of a resolution establishing Lake Gloria Tax Increment Finance District.
I'll motion to establish Lake Gloria Tax Incentive Financing District.
I second it. Any discussions?
Yes. This is, and as we discussed from six to seven tonight, nobody's getting a tax break on this. It's just that the revenues generated by the increase in value, we can use it the township to fix stuff within that specific district or provide services or, or repairs. So for that reason, I'll support it.
I, I support this project because that old people road from Strible Road, from the, the Northwest High School, it's gonna be beautiful over there. For years, yes, I've probably drove by this about fourteen, fifteen years, it was same, nothing happened. People, you know, just throw garbage up there. Now we're gonna have a nice development site, and it's gonna look great, that, that area. And, and also, it's, it's gonna attract some business over there, too.
The bottom line on each one of these is it's a vehicle to increase operating revenue without increasing individual taxes for our residents, and I think that that's a win.
Any further discussions?
Not, not from me.
Okay. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Zillig Tax Increment Financing District.
I'll motion to establish the Zillig Tax Increment Financing District.
I second it. Any discussions?
Once again, this is not a tax break for anybody. It just allows us to use the increased tax revenues locally to make improvements in that area. No other comments from me.
Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd like to recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Hunter's Ridge Tax Increment Financing District.
I'll motion to establish Hunter Ridge Tax Increment Financing District.
I second it. Any discussions?
And this is an example, I think you had mentioned there was a street problem back there.
Sir.
So this is a case where we would use those local revenues to repair that street, which was...
Hunter's Ridge.
Which was accepted sometime in the way back. And is, has, I think you've been out there and looked at it. What are the problems with that street?
Well, it was constructed and they have built houses and, as you described, run construction equipment over the new road, and we had to accept it. And now they're ready to build out another phase, and they're gonna run a whole another series of heavy equipment over that road. And, and it's, it's a ten- or fifteen-year-old road that looks like a forty-year-old road.
And, and that's a reason to establish a tax increment financing district so that we might have the money to repair that, even though those new houses are gonna require, you know, increased fire, police services, and whatever else we do out there in sidewalks and that.
But it really is an equity issue in my mind. I mean, does it, is it fair to have the rest of the township pay to replace that very new road? Or does it make more sense to have the users of that road pay for the replacement of that road?
Right. Just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussions? Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd like to recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Dunlop Grove Tax Increment Financing District.
I'll motion to establish Dunlop Grove Tax Increment Financing District.
I second it. Any discussions?
None from me.
Okay. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd like to recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Crosley Meadows Tax Increment Financing District.
I'll motion to establish Crosley Meadows Tax Increment Financing District.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
None from me.
Okay. Mr. Baker, Matt, any discussion?
Mr. Unger? Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd like to recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Copper Creek Tax Increment Financing District.
A motion to establish a Copper Creek, the Copper Creek Tax Increment Financing District.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
As discussed on the last issue, if ultimately we're forced to accept that street, this will give us some funding to start off by repairing the street.
Any further discussions?
Nope.
Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next, I'd like to recommend the adoption of a resolution establishing the Abbey Town Tax Increment Financing District.
A motion to establish the Abbey Town Tax Increment Financing District.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
This, this will provide localized funding to complete sidewalks and other issues at that site.
Yes, sir.
And along with other funding streams that would go into those sidewalks.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything, there's a list of uses that are eligible, and anything that the Board of Trustees would like to use that money for, they can, including sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
I, I like this project, Abbey Town. You know, they build a, going to build a great homes. I'm very disappointed with the developer, Austin. The last resolution meetings, I expressed, we got a lot of residents from the neighborhood came and talked, expressed their concern about the sidewalk, their concern about other issues, the water flooding problem. Actually, the wa, the water flooding problem, I met with the Muhammad Islam, the director of the, the county planning department. He did this a private study, hired the engineering firm, how is this, the, the problem that, you know, that the flooding could cause, they address a problem. He did this, he's going to give me the report. And he seems very positive. It will not cause much of a, the storm or water drainage over there. But I told specifically to the Mr. Austin, "Go to the neighborhood, talk to the residents." They, they're really angry about some of the sidewalk issues, they're going to, in the, in the, in the diagram, the graph, and the designs. But he never did go there and talk to the residents. Then, but last week, I went to speak to the residents, they were very, very disappointed. But they can support this project. If Austin would have went there, talked to the residents, assured them what, how you can improve the project, still, still won't affect the residents, their vision, how the, building the project, like this Abbey Town project, will affect them. All I ask Austin, to go and talk to the residents, he never did. So, I'm very disappointed. Any further discussions, please?
The money from that tax increment financing district could be used to correct problems in there, so.
But they, Austin would have, all he asked, he'd go and talk to the people.
Right. Oh, I know, but that, that's independent of what, what.
Yeah, right, right.
The tax increment financing district.
Right. This is things. The neighborhood is waiting for him to talk, but he never addressed it.
So, none of the, and I just want to make it clear, that none of the money that's generated by this tax increment financing district would go towards the development or anything on the development. So, it's all for the township.
I know, I agree with that. But we are not such a greedy for the money from the, in the token of the, the residents suffering from this project. They're going to suffer, they think, you know, at least we can talk to the residents, bring them on the board.
Yeah.
This, this, you know, what the developer did, it's so wrong. I don't like that. Okay? That's my discussions. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
No.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Board. That ends the, the TIF portion of the agenda. The next items are in administration. The first one is a feel-good motion. For some reason, and we do this every year, but the Board makes a motion to establish Halloween trick-or-treat hours. And, you know, surprise of all surprises, that usually happens on October 31st of each year, and it's always from six until eight. So, I guess I'll, I'll ask you for the ceremonial motion to establish 2021 Halloween trick-or-treat hours in Corrine Township to be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on October 31st, 2021.
I motion that we establish 2021 Halloween trick-or-treat hours in Corrine Township to be from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. on October 31st, 2021.
I'll second that.
I do think it's a good idea to establish when it is, so that, that people know.
Okay.
Because you have the untypical situation with people going from yard to yard, and that way citizens know when it is. And if somebody's showing up at 9:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, they're kind of out of the.
Out of the hours.
Out of the hours. So, no other comments.
It's a good, good thing we were bringing back.
Good.
It makes our children happy.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
They love that. Any further discussions?
Yep.
Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Thank you, Board. The last item of new business is a motion authorizing the Township Administrator to release a request for proposals for the administration of the township's vacant building maintenance license program and the vacant foreclosed property registry programs. You'll recall back in March, we entered into a contract with a company called MuniReg to administer these two programs on behalf of the township. We, the gentleman from MuniReg came and gave a presentation. He said at that time that, you know, he's, his company is a startup, and, you know, he had lots of great experience from previous employers. However, I am not satisfied with the performance on that contract, and would like to look at other options for administering these two programs on behalf of the township. After doing some research, it's my understanding that there are other companies that do this, and having contacted some folks that use other vendors, they are happy with it, and pleased, and there are numbers to support success. So, my recommendation is to adopt this motion. We'll release the RFP, see what comes back, and, and go from there. I'll just, to be very clear, the township hasn't spent a dime on any of this, because you'll recall that the vendor was paid through, every time they would collect one of these registrations, they would be paid a portion of that registration. They have not collected any, so they have not been paid anything.
So, I will motion to authorize the Township Administrator to release a request for proposals for administration of the township's vacant building maintenance license and vacant foreclosed property registry programs.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
No.
I, too, was very disappointed with MuniReg. In fact, I followed up with you a number of times, and I just didn't understand if, if they worked on a per-item basis, what's taken so long. I mean, you know, the, go, go get your money. My experience has been with other ones that they're a lot more efficient when it comes that way. In fact, and I think Mr. Unger indicated these concerns when we had this discussion, maybe overly efficient. Like, you need to rein them in a little bit and say, "All right, you know, we're still a community, we still have, you know, we still want to help our neighbors out sometimes." But, but I do support this request for proposals, and see what comes back, and, and see if we can find the right fit.
And going back to that discussion, several six, several meetings ago, six months ago, every property eventually changes hands. And there might be a point in time where it's vacant, and we need to be compassionate about that, because everybody's going to eventually pass away, and there might be a several-month point there where a house is vacant, while an estate's being settled. So, we need to be conscious of that. And, but that's different than some of the, some of the properties this is designed to address, so.
Any further discussions?
No.
Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Okay. The next, the item is old business?
No, sir, no old business this evening.
Okay. The next one is the consent items.
Yes, sir. We have two items on the consent agenda. They're both contracts. This came up earlier in Citizens' address. We publish all of our contracts in their entirety here in our agenda. As you'll recall, each year, for years past, you've granted the authority for the administrator to execute contracts up to $10,000. I then bring those back, and you ratify those in, on the consent agenda. So, that's what we have here. We have two contracts. One is with Citizens for Civic Renewal for the facilitation of our two town hall meetings. And we have another one that is a contract with the Ohio Attorney General's Office. It's, it's a grant recipient agreement, which provides $47,400 to the township. Recommend approval of all consent items.
I'd motion that we approve the consent items A and B on the agenda.
Second.
Discussions?
None from me.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
On the first town hall meeting, I was, you know, I wa, you know, I was in that town hall meeting.
Yes, sir.
The second one, we need to get more residents get involved, participate.
Yes.
So, what type of measure we will take to get more of the residents involved?
Yeah. I, I think if everybody in this room, and everybody that's listening, A, participates, and B, you know, if you ask five people to participate, I think that that sort of snowball effect will, will help a lot. We tried to get the word out as best we can, but sometimes it takes personal invitations to participate from, from folks. And that's certainly what we did to get the people that were there. We, we reached out and said, "Hey, please join us." And, and if everybody does that, then we'll have a robust conversation. Even with, I think we had a dozen attendees two weeks ago. It was a great conversation. I mean, really good idea.
It's a great conversation that doesn't involve our staff to, but what is the possibilities of having in-person town hall meeting?
At this point, with just, you know, four days away, four workdays away from it, I don't know that it would be possible to make that pivot, but.
Okay. Any further discussions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Okay. The second contract, Ohio Attorney, is all the separate consent?
It was, it was a consent agenda, so we're.
Okay, A and B. Okay. The last one is fiscal office report.
Thank you, Board. I don't have a whole lot tonight, but I do just want to give a brief update on public records requests. We've reached 230 public records requests for this year, and we currently only have five active. So, we're working very hard to get those done quickly. And again, big thanks to, to everyone that helps out in every department, you know, to get that information to, to us very quickly. And then, lastly, I do urge everyone, if they didn't see the presentation at 6:00 regarding tax increment financing, there's so much more in there that I think would benefit people. I, I think that the explanation and regarding property taxes was, was fascinating and very informative. And so, I would just urge anyone out there that is watching this, that didn't see the earlier presentation, I would urge you to do it, because it was very informative. And, and thanks to Jeff Mills, Jeff Webb, Jeff McElraby for, for putting that together. That's all I have.
Before the next item, Mr. President, I just want to remind people that the next meeting is out of rotation a little bit. Instead of the 12, October 12th, it's October 5th, which is Tuesday. Still a Tuesday, still the same time, it's just the weeks are, so it's the 5th and the 26th in October.
That is correct.
Okay. Any further?
Gentlemen, I recommend that the Board go into executive session in accordance with the Higher Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, to discuss the employment, discipline, termination, and/or compensation of public employees. And I would just make a, a comment that typically when we get back from executive session, there is no, nothing to report and no action taken. I, I believe that there, there's a possibility that action might be taken tonight.
I would motion that we go into executive session for the reasons described by Administrator Mills.
I'm sorry, did, did we give the exact reason?
For the, to discuss employment, discipline, termination, and/or compensation of public employees.
Did I just miss that? I sent out first. It was on there. Sorry. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussions?
Stick around, we'll be, we'll be back. I don't know how long you think this will take.
Two, three hours.
Yeah, no, I hope not.
15, 15, 20, just hang, hang around. We'll be, we'll be back, so.
Mr. Baker?
We have to vote.
Roll call to go on the.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
All right. We should be back after the executive session.
I mean, no later than midnight, I would think.
It's 9:08 p.m. Tuesday, September 29, 28. The Board of Trustees are back from the executive sessions. Okay. Mr. Mills?
Should we do a roll call?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
Yes, sir. I do have a report following executive session. Board, recently, former officer mayor abandoned his position as a Corrine Township police officer by failing to provide any reasonable return-to-work date, which was supported by any proper documentation. However, former officer mayor still recently sent a grievance to the township trustees despite my decision that there was no grievable issue. Former officer mayor was not terminated, he was not issued any form of discipline, and no alleged misconduct was asserted by the township against him. Therefore, I would recommend that the trustees, by motion, find that there is no grievable issue, or any interpretation, application, or any breach of the CBA at issue in this matter, and that the township considers this matter closed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions?
Not from me.
None.
None. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Okay. Finally, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I will second it.
Any discussions?
Just a reminder that the next meeting is October 5th, not the 12th. We're the 5th and the 26th. We're off cycle a little bit, because we had to make a slight change.
Okay. Mr. Baker, roll call, please.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Raj Kapal?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Okay. It's, what's time? It's 9:10 p.m. The meeting is, Board of Trustees meeting is adjourned.